He is the man, the legend.
Uh, so it looks to me as if um. We're all here that are going to be here this evening. Is that correct, Lauren?
Yes.
Great.
All right, so I'm going to begin the meeting then. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, members of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, staff and interested parties. Welcome to the Wednesday, August 11th, 2021, Planning Board Meeting of the Town of Cohasset. The time is 6:31 PM. This is a Zoom virtual meeting. After the board members indicate their presence, then I will ask Lauren Lind, the Planning Director, to direct the public as to how they can participate. Or um, and um, so let's begin. Clark Brewer. Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan.
Here.
Eric Potter.
Eric Potter here.
Amy Glassmeyer here. Lauren, would you like to uh, notify the public how they can participate?
Certainly. Um, we actually don't have anyone in the public here tonight. Angela Jessa works for us, actually. But for the record, I will state that if any members of the public ever wish to comment at a planning board meeting at Zoom, on a Zoom platform, we use the question and answer function below. You input your name and address, and you can insert any comments there, or we can promote you to speak to the board if desired.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Ms. Katie Dugan. Ms. Dugan is the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Tonight is a working session for the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Planning Board. Uh, the plant, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is a um, uh, is related to the Planning Board and will provide us with an annual update. Um, we also will have an informal discussion after that presentation is completed regarding work that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is doing under the zoning bylaw working group. Uh, and we'll have an update on special town meeting potential zoning articles. And then finally, we'll have an informal discussion about common driveway standards. With no further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Dugan.
Thanks, guys. Um, I am going to go ahead and share my screen. As usual, I come bearing PowerPoint, so um, so it's been a
It's a nice PowerPoint.
Yeah, no, I mean, I try and keep it colorful, you know. A summer palette. So it was about a year ago um, that we gave our first set of preliminary recommendations to the Planning Board. As you, the board have statutory responsibility for the master plan for the committee. Um, we felt it was important to come back annually and update the Planning Board. Um, we've provided some quicker updates periodically throughout the year. We've also been in front of you, as Amy referred to, as the working group of the zoning bylaw working group um, to give some updates. So I think we've had some good connections. You know, as we go through this, if there's um, different or better ways that we can communicate with you um, going forward, um, please speak up. I'm happy to change things up. But I did think it was important to kind of get us together and do a bit of a state of the state. So that's what tonight is. Um, so the table contents, I'm gonna skip around a, a, a bit um, and move quickly through some sections. So if I'm skipping over something that you find interesting, let me know, but otherwise, I'm just gonna keep on moving ahead to try and get through this and get to a conversation about it, and then get on to some of the topics that um, we have from the zoning bylaw working group. So the table of contents for the presentation tonight kind of breaks it down into um, three main parts. One is um, the implementation recommendations that we made last year. Where do we stand with those? Um, and, and what do we still need to do in terms of remaining next steps? I wanted to talk a little bit about funding, um, because it is um, one of the things that we need to inject into this process, um, to complete some of the um, top five implementation priorities from last year. But also, as we look about, we, we turn the page and look at um, the next five. There are a number of areas where we're gonna need to find either external funding from grant or in addition to that funding from within the town. Um, so that's um, and some of that funding drives a need to build internal capacity at the town, which is kind of another theme in terms of we need to build um, ca- capacity and capability um, on our town hall side and also our committee side before we commit to some of these next priorities. And then I want to talk a little bit about what the year two plus goals are. Implementation priorities and next steps. We, we deliberately said year two plus um, because we're not suggesting that we should jump into these, you know, all necessarily in fiscal 2022, but rather kind of phase these in over the next period of time as we see opportunities and um, bandwidth available on the town hall and the committee side. So that's kind of the goal for tonight. Um, so these were goals last year. Communicate, collaborate, um, centralize focus and cultivate resources. Um, to be honest, I think we did really well on cultivating resources and centralizing focus. Um, I think that on collaboration, we gave ourselves kind of a lime green, saying that we've made a lot of progress. Um, as you guys know, we set up three working groups. We have a number of liaison relationships from master plan implementation to um, boards in town. Um, but there's always more work to be done, and frankly, there are thirty committees in town and, and lots of town departments. So it'll be a work in progress as we continue to build those relationships and collaborate. And now communicate, I think that was our weakest area, and to be honest, it, some of it came from the fact that we were trying to centralize focus on a couple priority areas and get those kicked off. Um, interestingly, one of the things that the um, select board identified as a goal of their own was to improve communications and actually give committees resources so they didn't have to take on as much of the brunt of communicating out their work. Um, but as we all know, the success of the master plan, some of it's gonna be based on the community's understanding of the work that we're doing. So the more that we can do in terms of outward communication, the better, and that will continue to be a goal of ours. Um, in terms of like where we stand, um, we have a master tracking spreadsheet, which I won't drag us through. But um, Lauren um, helps us maintain that, and it has all hundred and thirty-eight strategies um, that relate to the master plan and all eleven chapters. And, you know, when we went through and updated it um, last month, what we realized is about fifty percent of our strategies are in process. That's the good news, is that we've got a lot of initial thrust. Um, the kind of the flip side of that is that we have very few that have reached conclude, uh, completion or conclusion. So we still have a lot of work to be done, but we know that this is a multi-year process. I think the thing, the two things that I'm sort of most proud of, um, of the committee and frankly, of all the working groups um, is one, that we maintain momentum during the pandemic. It was kind of unclear back in April how much we're gonna be able to do, but we actually maintained some momentum and got some work done. Um, and then the other thing was really the cross-committee collaboration and communication. I really feel like the working groups we set up and just kind of this, this rhythm of interacting with the planning board, with select board, with um, other relevant boards like Harbor, has really set us up so that we're not working in silos as much as we used to from a committee perspective, and I think that's gonna um, bode well um, for the master plan because a lot of the implementation priorities do require kind of that um, cross-committee collaboration in order to be successful. So that's just the quick overview there. Um, I'm not gonna walk you guys through the individual accomplishments. I think in um, you guys may know a lot of them already, um, because you guys are on Elm Street on zoning. Um, you have a liaison to affordable. Um, but I do want to focus on the fact that if you look at the first column, estimated percent complete. Um, we are, in some cases, you know, on Elm Street and zoning bylaws at like twenty-five percent complete. Um, the good news is that we are probably going to turn that corner and get to close to a hundred percent complete in the next twelve to twenty-four months. Um, but we still have to um, keep some sustained effort against those two initiatives in order to really see them through to the finish line. On affordable housing, you know, we've made significant progress, and I know that we're all waiting for our first certified affordable housing unit be put in place. But unlike a couple of years ago, we actually have forty affordable housing units in the pipeline between CHI, 808 Jerusalem, um, 390 CJC, and One Pleasant Street. And so we actually have the chance to um, be able to get to that um, forty B Safe Harbor and get some cushion for the next decade, which is um, in my mind, significant progress. In terms of economic development and sewer planning, those two we've kicked off. Um, but we knew when we kind of identified that those were gonna be longer, longer and slower burn um, working groups. Uh, economic development is one that you just keep on peeling back the layers um, and keep working at year after year. And sewer planning, same thing. You know, we're getting to some decisions around regional sewer and, and what our sewer planning might look like for Cohasset. But the implementation phase on that is gonna be a good three to five years once we get to a decision point, which hopefully we'll get to in the next, I don't know, six to twelve months. And so for economic development and sewer planning, we're not gonna be complete um, in any sense of the word, I think, for another three to five years. So the good news is that we've got all five of these initial priorities up and, and running and, and individual um, working groups and committees, really putting in quite a bit of work against them. The bad news is that we're gonna have to continue to sustain effort against them, which means that we're, we're obviously gonna be tied up on completing these for um, a little bit longer. So that's kind of the state of the state in terms of the top five implementation priorities. In terms of um, next steps, you know, I, I think the one that I really wanted to highlight, there are some things at the top which are kind of um, business that I need to take care of with the select board around appointments. But there were two pieces, there were two kind of pieces of significant ongoing business. One is sewer planning, and that is one that I think the select board right now in, in conjunction with the, the Sewer Commission is really driving. But there's a um, new project that I, that I think is going to, that is going to evolve out of the Economic Development Task Force that was put in place this year around downtown revitalization. And it's sort of building on some of what you've already seen as a planning board with One Pleasant Street. Um, and the fact that there are some other properties in the downtown area that are likely to convert in terms of um, development projects in the next twelve to twenty-four months, like the gas station. Um, there's been talk about um, potentially via doing some work. Um, and so there is this thought that there's an opportunity here, given what's happening on the development side, plus the fact that we have a zoning bylaw working group um, standing up, plus the, the fact that there is going to be state and federal funding out there to do physical infrastructure work. Um, and we have some stakeholders and, and committee structure that we can leverage, that there's an opportunity to turn and, and set up a downtown revitalization project. So that's probably the most significant um, development in terms of a spinoff that we've had from the year one goals that I wanted to make you aware of. Um, in terms of the downtown revitalization project itself, I mean, the first step is really setting up the scope and the vision for that. Um, and we're gonna have some preliminary meetings this fall to kind of further refine that. But I did wanna, I did wanna highlight that for the planning board. And if there's a um, uh, individual from the planning board that wants to be involved in that, I think it would be really helpful to have a partner from planning board, in addition to Master Plan Implementation Committee and Lauren, and um, a member of the Economic Task Force to kind of get that um, scope set correctly as we start down the path. So I'll pause there for a second, see if there's any questions. Amy, did you guys talk about downtown revitalization as a um, priority for the planning board? I can't remember what you guys set, or if you ever really finalized your goals, but I seem to remember downtown was one of them you were talking about.
We've had conversations um, on and on, on and off about that. It often comes up uh, in relationship to uh, what is, what happens first and, and how you actually execute something like a revitalization and knitting things together. Uh, we have never sat down as a group and, and said, this is the number one priority that we set. Uh, but I would say that it is discussed usually in conjunction with, with such things as sidewalks, as an example, and um, uh, Main Street facade improvements and things like that. So we haven't sort of nailed it as a primary uh, force that we're interested in um, exercising. But it is, what I would say is a pretty common expectation of a planning board to do something like this.
Okay. I, I guess what I would say is that we're sort of in the envisioning, like the internal envisioning phase, not even the external envisioning phase at this point. So um, I will, once we sort of get a, a, a meeting in the um, works, I, I would like to ask one member from the planning board to attend and, and kind of um, at least help with some of the, the initial formal, um, the initial um, ideas around what this downtown revitalization project could look like. I know that Corey Evans and Carrie Thompson and the, the Economic Task Force have some thoughts. Um, but I want to make sure that the planning board, in addition to Lauren Lind and Master Plan, all kind of work with them to kind of get that scope correctly. So I'll circle back to the planning board, but I just wanted to put that out there as a request, um, to have a bit of a partnership on that. Um, and again, we're not in heavy lifting phase, but
I'd be interested in, because I'm down here anyway, and uh, I, I, so I'm here around, around town, especially down in the village, and have, you know, relationships with a lot of people down here that have businesses. So uh, that would be something that would pique my interest, certainly. I'm not saying that it has to be made, but it's something that I would be interested in.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Eric. Um, I um,
And I just have uh, two comments about the, about the downtown. One is, we always call it the village.
Yeah.
Um, and then um, it, it is a, a critical hub in, in our Elm Street corridor, Harbor to Village connection.
Yep.
Um, you know, where we, we really see a complete transformation in, in the harbor area uh, over time. Uh, but uh, with the, with the project at the Cove uh, in short uh, in short order and the, and the Elm Street corridor. Um, and the, the Elm Street corridor design, uh, it, it kind of slams into the debt, the village.
Yeah.
Uh, in, in, in an uncertain uh, way, where, you know, what's the cutoff in terms of, in terms of scope? So marrying, marrying those three projects, the, the two ends and the, and the stuff in the middle
Yep.
is uh, is super critical to coordinate uh, in particular and uh, to, to get uh, I think, excitement and, and, and figure out uh, ways to make things, make things better. Uh, like, for example, we, we've been talking on the Elm Street corridor about uh, the potential for one way around the um, yeah, uh, the end of uh, Elm Street, where it slams into South Main Street and, and having, allowing kind of circular access through Bo- Brook. Uh, and having Brook also be uh, one way to have more parking there. And, and, and so, but the Elm Street corridor, you know, it's, it, it's sort of uncertain where the start stop is. Like, how much is too much? Where do you, where do you make a suggestion and then, and then hand off? Because the, the one-way uh, thing was tried out with cones uh, five, ten years ago or so, lasted a weekend uh, to mixed reviews.
Hmm. Yeah. Well, I think, I think part of the, you're sort of nailing the, a piece of it, which is there, there's a, there's a ripple effect that's, that's happening, and it's kind of, honestly, it's kind of heading both directions. It, you know, it's starting at the harbor with CHI, rolling up Elm Street, and then we've got a lot of um, things that are beginning to happen or will happen in the downtown. And so there certainly is a need to have it all connect in terms of timing. You know, CHI and Elm Street corridor obviously um, ahead um, in terms of the planning and the visioning, but that doesn't mean that we should stop there, or we shouldn't figure out what that end connection looks like in terms of the village. And, and, and that was really the realization that um, you know, we need to phase this in sooner rather than later. Because things are happening in the village as we speak. Um, and we have external factors like CHI and Elm Street corridor happening that are gonna really cause us to wanna think about those connection points that you've laid out.
Right, and, 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 in terms of anything that we review that's gonna happen in the village, the, the more we can uh, show what, what the ultimate vision goal is, the more likely we can um, uh, collaborate with the development teams uh, to get some of those pieces of work done.
Yeah, no, I think you're right. I mean, if we, if we can, if we can work on that vision piece, then when we want to do any of those I don't know, community partnership or, or um, those kind of arrangements um, where we're asking the developer to contribute um, to the community, we'll have a better sense of what we need or want versus just kind of guessing or just taking dollars.
Right, right.
The difference between this and the CHI project, right, is that, that, you know, because a lot of those buildings downtown, like you've just mentioned, maybe going to go in some construction or, 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 I mean, new projects going on down there. A lot of those buildings are old, so it would be kind of nice to be in the driver's seat this time around, and what the town is looking forward, or what their expectations are, so that we can you know, be prepared when, when developers come and keep everything moving along and not be kind of back on our heels. It would be nice to be able to do that.
Yeah, I mean, having, having a, having a sense of the vision or the wants and needs of the community so that you're, you're using, you have that to sort of drive what you're asking for instead of fumbling. Would be good, so.
Yeah, and, and you know what to ask. Um, if there's like a preliminary plan, y- you know what to ask of the developers when they come forward.
Yeah. So that's, that is the goal, is to start kicking this off um, this fall, so that we can get the ball rolling. I, I don't have a clear timeline, but that's part of what we need to, to do in terms of the scope, timeline, vision for this project. But I, but I do think i- the urgency is going to be apparent, um, so we might as well get started now, because we know that the, the um, there are, there are factors that are gonna drive it, um, and we can either choose to be run over by it or we can try and be in the driver's seat, and I think all of us would appreciate being in more of a driver's seat perspective when it comes to the village revitalization. Um, so that's, so that's kind of where we stand with um, our current projects, and I, I just wanted to
Can I ask a question about the, the downtown revitalization, its interactions with the Elm Street corridor? Is there any commitment on the part of town to provide resources for professionals to um, do some of the basic work that's necessary as a precursor to a downtown revitalization plan?
Yes, and so that's part of what we want to get more clear on. But um, I had a conversation this week with um, Chris and Carrie Thompson, and Lauren was on it about potentially even using America Recovery Act um, program dollars to fund um, some resources from the town side to really help us dig into the, into the village downtown revitalization project. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall back on Lauren, but we'd be bringing in new resources. And there is potentially um, America Recovery Act dollars that the town has in hand now, because this kind of falls under economic development and potentially some infrastructure work, we could see our way clear to using some of that. So um, yes, funding, funding and, and resources are a piece of all of these conversations. Because I, I think we all recognize it's not gonna magically come from any of our existing um, employees or committees' workloads.
And, and the first thing that can be done is, is put together an inventory of, of previous studies and plans that have been uh, already done so that you have a, a baseline.
Yeah, I, it, it's
It doesn't cost anything.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, I think another thing that we could do uh, is to act, ask MAPC to provide us with um, uh, a digest of what they're up to with other communities, because they have been running regular, you know, half hour to forty-five minute um, uh, online conversations about community needs and the kinds of requirements that accessing funds uh, entail.
Yes. Um, MHBC definitely comes up as a resource. Um, a- and there's, there's a sense that there are some um, planners, whether it's uh, MAPC or, or other um, planners, that have some real expertise when it comes to kind of village or downtown revitalization projects, because they are multifaceted. So um, I think there's a desire that I've heard expressed by um, Corey and Carrie, who have been thinking about this from the Economic Task Force perspective, that we find a subject matter expert. We're not just sort of choosing consultant, you know, X, Y, Z, but somebody that really has done this kind of work before and leveraged, and we can leverage their expertise. Um, so that's the other theme that's come up. Um, so I wanted to move on to the kind of the next um, chapter in this presentation, which is kind of where are we with funding? And I think the, the great news is that we actually have gotten quite a bit of funding um, already in place or have requested for Master Plan Implementation Committee initiatives. Um, this slide totals up to uh, two point six million. Um, we had a little bit over a million dollars approved at annual town meeting from, you know, consulting services, not all of which will be master plan implementation, to money for, for housing, for town docs. Um, we've applied for two commu- community one-stop-for-growth grants. Um, these are planning grants. Um, we had previewed with the state five grants uh, ideas that we had. Um, four of the five, they liked. We decided to move forward with two of them in June, because they were really the closest to being shovel-ready. One being Elm Street corridor revitalization. The request there was for five hundred thousand. Um, and that will help us get to the seventy-five percent engineering, um, should we receive that grant. And then we requested seventy-five thousand dollars um, to assist with the comprehensive zoning bylaw redraft and reorganization. In addition to those two planning grants, um, the Harbor Committee has um, or is making um, two grant requests to the Seaport Economic Council for nine hundred thousand for the Parker Avenue Boat Ramp and a million dollars for some of the government island pier and lift systems. And then in addition to those two grants that are being uh, requested, we have two other grants that we received. One was eighty-five thousand for um, regional um, economic development, which was a pilot with um, with Hall. Um, and then a second was, we received thirty thousand from MastDOT to begin the twenty-five percent engineering work for three A North segment, which is gonna really provide some important um, multimodal and connectivity between um, Sawyer Street all the way up to the MBA train station. So, you know, two point six million dollars um, for, you know, a year's worth of work and probably more like eighteen months of work is not bad. Um, and so we've got a lot of great funding. Um, we're obviously waiting on two big pieces of it. One, the community one-stop-for-growth in the Seaport Economic. Um, but we've got funding in place to sustain some of our major year one um, projects. Um, so now sort of turning the corner, that's year one. Um, now if you start talking about, well, what do we need next? The other two community one-stop-for-growth grants that we um, previewed but did not formally apply for, one was for downtown village revitalization. Um, and I think once we go through this kind of visioning phase and scope phase, we can turn back to that for additional planning um, help and assistance. And then the second one was a grant for the seventy-five percent engineering to get us to that um, point where we could actually be interacting with the, um, the state and the tip for that three A North segment. Um, in addition to those two grants, um, which will hopefully apply for sometime in sort of fiscal, I don't know, late fiscal twenty-two or fiscal twenty-three, we've got additional harbor grants um, related to break wa- uh, water repairs and seawall and other resiliency improvements. Those are gonna be multiple rounds of grants as we try and work on those. And, and perhaps some of the federal funding for infrastructure may accelerate some of that work, um, depending on how that money rolls out from um, federal to state. And then in addition to that, we've got a variety of other committees and areas that we're gonna be applying for gra- grants in open space and rec, um, continuing to apply for complete streets, um, AEC, economic development, and municipal vulnerability. So the message that I gave to the select board is that the complexity of the town's grant management is increasing. We have five grants, we have five plus grants that we're already pursuing or, or um, have received in fiscal twenty-twenty-two. And we've got multiple new rounds of grants that we're looking at in fiscal twenty-twenty-three. So the message was, we need to build capacity in advance of, and I mean, human capacity to, in advance of receiving these grants, to make sure that we are positioned to be able to actually do the project management and the execution on them. Um, and that's kind of the trick here, is that we're, we're getting better at um, applying and receiving grant money, but we still haven't sort of sorted out um, who is gonna be ultimately responsible from a town perspective when we get the happy news that we've received money. It, it, it becomes a stressor. It it becomes a stressor and so part of the recommendations you'll see later is that we are actually requesting additional. F T Es or full time equivalents in the planning department in order to be able to sustain this level of grant applications as we move forward. As part of the harbor and the master plan implementation process.
On on the the current grant management that's distributed between Lauren and maybe Jason and Brian Joyce. Jason Federico and Brian Joyce. Depending on the type of grant.
Yep.
But I can see that, yes, you're going to need a. Liaison for for all these grants and in terms of like you you can't dump more. Full grants on one person who is already. Got too much going on, so yeah.
That is, that is the absolute and. It was interesting, the select board was already. It it will truly, it will truly be interesting to see whether that when it comes to fiscal twenty twenty three budgeting. Whether they have the same appetite. I hope they do. I will be there pushing them and I hope that I would hope I would have planning board also there. Pushing, but I the the fact is is that our our planning function is is flat out right now. And there's no way we can even turn a page in the book and think about these next rounds of grant without additional.
Lauren's not saying anything. She's just blinking a lot.
I know, she's overloaded.
I mean, what type of person do you think, I mean, you know. In 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 this increased staff member, what kind of person do you think that would they would be?
So.
Like an engineering background or like a like a planning background for management?
So I think right now we've we've sort of.
Project manager, that kind of.
We've put we've put it into two zero point five buckets, just recognizing that we have to sort of sort out how much of it we need. On the engineering side and how much of it we really need on sort of the planning side. So the answer is, I don't know yet. I just know we need the capacity and some of it's going to come down to. Which which are which grants make it to the front first and I. Part of it too, I also wonder whether we need somebody with some expertise around resiliency. And and climate issues because there are going to be a bunch of big issues. Around that that also comes up as part of the planning conversations. So I don't have a, I don't have a really firm answer for you yet, except to to say that the request is there to add. Capacity, exactly what that capacity looks like in terms of increments and skill sets, not a hundred percent there.
Right, understood, but you're thinking along those lines.
Yeah.
Katie, is there any discussion of sharing a planner between town? So Hull and us or Cohasset and Situate. It it just seems like, you know, it may be that that we're not the only ones that are up to our ears and alligators. And that the resources are tight to get a really solid professional which can, you know, do this. There are similar problems, right, in Hull, in Situate and, you know, is there, has there been any discussion of sharing a professional?
Not yet, Amy. Yeah, I think part of it is tied to the question that I couldn't answer for for Clark, which is exactly what what are our needs right now. I don't disagree with you that there. And one of the things that we identify is that there are a lot of. There are a lot of issues that we're facing as a as a South Shore. The resiliency piece of it, I can see there being great overlap, maybe not exactly the same issues with Situate Harbor or Cohasset Harbor. But ultimately, resiliency expertise is something that we're going to need to have in both our towns, so do we share a resource? Maybe, but I think some of it comes down to when we look at this one point oh request, like where does it break down in terms of. Planning versus engineering? So that's, so really the conversation is kind of good news, bad news. I mean, the good news is that we're getting money. The good news is that we're setting ourselves up for additional grant new grant requests. The bad news is that we need to build, we need to build grant management, project management, engineering capacity in order to be able to support this. From a town perspective, so we're going to need to keep our collective feet to the fire to make good on that promise. So that we can support all of these initiatives going forward. So year two goals, balancing priorities, budget, getting funding and broadcasting, continue to communicate. So those are really very similar to year one, the three Bs going forward. So I wanted to quickly foreshadow kind of what the next five implementation priorities are and. As I said upfront, we we said these were year two plus because we we knew that we needed to finish up and continue to focus on on our year one. Top implementation priorities, but these five seem to kind of pop as ones that, you know. Were going to happen to us if we weren't willing to take some initiative against them. Or they were really ones that community was continues to ask for, so we really should put out there as the next. Round or the next phase of implementation. So land use focus, you guys are on the forefront of this. You guys live this in terms of the complexity of the development and land use issues facing the town. So the the land use implementation priority is really about better supporting the permitting boards in terms of training. Staffing, legal counsel, education of the community, what you need in order to be able to do. Your increasingly complex job as it relates to land use. In addition to that, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has signed up to help. Better understand the the build out potential. Around some of the remaining aspects of the the town's development. And the Open Space and Rec Committee has an interest in really identifying where the critical links in the chain are. In terms of potential open space acquisitions so that we have criteria and what those parcels are. So that as those opportunities present themselves, we have a shot at actually acquiring those critical pieces of open space that are left in the community. So land use focus is one of the next five implementation priorities. The next implementation priority is around sidewalks and Route three A improvements and and this was actually one that. When we met as a Master Plan Implementation Committee last year as we were setting our first five, it was one that was like on the cusp. But the community continues to ask for safety and multimodal access, particularly to recreation, open space, but also general connectivity. So the two initiatives here are one, you know, getting prepared and finishing the three A south improvements that are going to be coming in twenty twenty three. And then completing the engineering work so that we can get on the tip, the transportation improvement program for three A north. Because that really is a critical piece of connectivity to. Not only the M B T A, but a a huge piece of open space in terms of everything that Wampe Tuck and the rail trail offer our community. And the most logical way to do it honestly is down three A, just because of some of the challenges that we have along. The the north main segment. And then last but not least is really developing a twenty year sidewalk plan and identifying a dedicated funding source. We had an in-depth conversation with Brian Joyce and Jason Federico about the Complete Spree's program. What the priorities were that came out of that planning. The good news is that we've completed everything we need to be to be qualified for complete streets. The flip side is that unfortunately, because of high demand for sidewalk funding. The state literally just in April said that all communities are capped at four hundred thousand dollars over a four year period. And for us, that basically means one sidewalk segment every four years. So we need to, if we want to put in sidewalks, we as a community have to step up and identify some funding sources for ourselves. And so what the Master Plan Implementation Committee is suggesting is that. In addition to what we can accomplish under complete streets, which is basically one sidewalk segment every four years. That we set up a funding source similar like we did for our R O P E B or or our road. Roadway repaving plan, that we do the same thing for sidewalks, save a hundred thousand dollars a year. So that over the over a four year period, we could put in an additional segment of sidewalks, so. Maybe not as spectacular as people want, but but we will be able to put in hopefully over a decade. Or over twelve years, six sideways, six sidewalk segments, which if we're able to accomplish that. Is going to be more sidewalk segments than Cohasset has ever completed in kind of a decade period, so.
This issue is also related to what we talked about in the village, for example, if we have a plan. And then we may be able to assign developers who are coming forward with projects that are related. We can assign potential segments of that and and. For example, we're we're looking at a Situate Hill development now and there's, they've been talking about connectivity. So, you know, to get it together like in the village as soon as possible with at least a preliminary plan. So we can get volunteers to chip away at those, that would that would be ideal. Now, I know that Mast D O T, basically, they want to see complete streets. If you're proposing something, then they they want to see. The whole thing, bike lanes, sidewalks, passing lanes.
Yeah.
I'll just give an anecdotal story, apparently. Somebody at Stop and Shop who lived in Cohasset who was who was high up in management had proposed to put a. Think a light at the end of Sawyer Street. And. And Mast D O T said, then they were willing to pay a million dollars. Mast D O T said, no, no, you can't do anything like that unless you. Put in the sidewalks and the and the bike lanes and all the other stuff and. Instead of just saying no, and and I asked the Mast D O T, the District Five people, I was like, well. You know, if somebody's stepping up and they they have a goal, there may be ways to collectively on the municipal and grant level. Create a whole project. With with the bridge funding or multiple sources of funding or approaches instead of just getting on the tip. There's there's other ways to 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 skin that cat if if we have a a plan that's. An approved plan everybody's seen in that. Work in the right way could be done by different teams.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's having a plan and the other piece of it is is kind of that matching funding piece, which is like. We talk a lot about wanting it and yet we have refused to put our own skin in the game, so I think if we are admitted to putting in. You know, a hundred thousand dollars out of free cash flow or out of budget or. You know, Chris was kind of spitballing when we were talking earlier this week and he was saying, well, we've got new growth. We always, you know, we always get. Six hundred or eight thou- eight hundred thousand dollars of new growth, which is a line item in tax levies. Which comes from new homes, new construction and it's not capped by the two and a half prop. And so we, while we generally get six hundred, eight hundred thousand of new growth, we only budget four hundred thousand and that that. Overage basically goes to free cash flow, but what happens if we take a piece of that overage and dedicate it to sidewalks? Because it's basically new growth is what is squeezing this community in terms of incremental, you know, congestion and traffic and houses. And and so.
Man on resources.
Yeah, but if we start relying on it, then we need more new growth and that's that's the philosophy that's led us to the. Large spike in growth that our research has shown since two thousand. It was all about growth, 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 growth.
Well, I I think the growth is happening because of land values. I mean, I.
I also, well, I I I think our overriding philosophy that I'm detecting from all. Master Plan Committee and the zoning working group is not to allow this town to get to full bolt build out. Because that'll be a disaster in lots of respects. So I I I'm just saying that just that that shouldn't be relied upon as a source of funds.
That that is something to balance. Is too much and and how much growth isn't enough, but getting back to the sidewalk issue, you probably know. But Avalon. This this sidewalk money for Avalon for Sawyer Street and and part of three A. That was given to the town that's in a special account and it's accruing interest, I understand.
Yeah, we it it's pretty shocking, like we we got two gifts. We got this seventy five thousand for Toll Brothers. Which had accrued enough interest to up to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We made the recommendation to take fifty. Off the table and put it towards Elm Street and Weston Sampson. But that had set, that had sat unused for, you know, since two two thousand and twelve. Similarly, Avalon had been donated and is now over half a million dollars. Accrued, so again, I think Avalon is actually going to get deployed against Sawyer Street and some of the improvements that are happening from. Fair Oaks to three A that are coming soon. The Toll Brothers is still sitting there, seventy five thousand dollars unused. Now there is a sidewalk segment request. Out there, but ironically, you know, the the sidewalk segment that is attached to that gift costs three hundred thousand dollars. So the seventy five thousand dollars doesn't get it done and and here's where we've always been trapped, which is we get a gift.
And it's a thirty million dollar, it was a thirty million dollar development and we got seventy five grand out of it.
And I think that's sort of what you guys are saying is if we have a plan, we know what the asks are, we know what they cost. You guys can do a better job of saying, sorry, like if you want to do this development, we know the impact on the community is going to be this. We know the sidewalk segment that we want most in order to, you know, ameliorate that is a five hundred thousand dollar project, sorry. You know, fifty thousand gifts not accepted.
That's right. A while back, we were, we were trying to find out who the engineering firm was that was doing the south segment on three A. Thinking that if we if we use the state's engineer to do that work, it would conform with all their requirements. And we wouldn't have to then go to state redesign on what we'd already done. That that we could buy, we could buy into the twenty five percent with the state's engineer. And I I think, you know, it it got. Sort of lost in the in the in the chaos of everything. But I think that's still a decent approach for the the north section.
I think we're using the same, I think we're using the same firm for the three A north section. I'm almost positive that they 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 leverage that.
Perfect, perfect, okay.
I got lost, I got lost in a large home review somewhere, I take the time to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, but this Katie, this is why, this is actually an awesome meeting because. I I just love the idea of of being starting to plan on these. These are real planning related matters. And if you get ahead of the game, you're being proactive instead of reactive and the work that is being done here is just so, it it's so impressive because it gives you. It gives us some little bit of of artillery here to kind of go forward and and have. You know, some sort of a approach to make things better. I mean, the sidewalks is is just so critical. It's such so important, so many dangerous streets. On this side of town between here and three A. And 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 it's just so important and then, you know, and I agree with Tom, Tommy, you know, what you said is true, I mean. Especially if a single lot exemption goes away, which probably, you know, it should, you know, how much? How does that affect development and and is that six hundred thousand still coming in? You know, I think you raise a great point there, but. These are great conversations to have. It's it's actually kind of energizing to have them because. You're planning for the future, you know, and really you guys have identified some of the most, you know, such such great, you know, important things over the next decade or so.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we have in various side conversations have brought up every now and then, and that is the development fees. So I know that Lauren is going to talk about the fact that we're raising our development fees, but we could do what other communities do. And that is they put a hefty development fee on the the creation of a new residence. And if you're building a three million dollar house, ten thousand dollars is trivial. And it is, and if it makes it easier for somebody to get the job done, they will certainly go along with it. They do go along with it in other communities, so there are ways in addition to having multi-unit. Develop developments as a source for contributions to betterment of the community. We just have to be willing to take the the steps to do it.
Figure it out, right? Like maybe even a percentage, even a percentage.
Yeah, I mean, Wellesley does a ten ten K off the top, just off the top. So, you know, we're building houses that are worth so much money that the amount that we could ask for. Would disappear a- a- at the other side of the decimal point.
Yeah, no, I I I think, you know, when it comes to funding sources, you know, one of the conversations we've had at the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Is that there's no silver bullet. It's going to be multiple sources. Silver bullet. It's going to be multiple sources that are going to get us to that saving, to a meaningful savings amount. It's. So to your point, Tom, it shouldn't all be, you know, new growth. It's going to it's going to need to be. A couple of different sources in order to be able to consistently save a hundred thousand dollars a year. Anyway, so in terms of sidewalk plan, you know, one of the commitments that we made to the select board was that this was going to be work that the Master Plan Implementation Committee was going to. Begin to tackle. And so I would say that. Probably the next update that we give the planning board is going to be a first pass at that sidewalk plan. And a funding plan, and I would hope to be able to do that for you guys in Q four of this year and kind of continue that conversation. Along with an update around the village or downtown revitalization. Those are probably the first two. They're going to get queued. Back up for additional updates to you guys. And then the third priority is a much longer term, but a very important one related to climate adaptation and sea level rise. And this really leverages some conversations that the Harbor Committee and requests the Harbor Harbor Committee has been making of the Select Board. And the community to help fund more detailed analysis of sea level rise and the impact that it's specifically going to have on harbor and government island assets. And in addition to that, the expectation that that is going to have some impact in terms of. Potential zoning recommendations that would be need to be made by the zoning bylaw working group. So Amy, this is an example of where I think collaboration with neighboring towns in terms of vulnerability studies could really pay off. And so we don't have a specific working group or a specific target timeline to begin this work. But it is something that that we lay out there as a year two plus priority. And I would say it's probably something that we will look at. Tackling in late fiscal twenty twenty two or into twenty twenty three, but it certainly is one that we need to start thinking about and and really. Starting to understand the specifics for Cohasset now. Because unfortunately, the the twenty year, twenty five year impacts of climate change are going to be upon us before we know it. So that, yeah.
So at UMass Boston, there is a center that does community studies around climate change.
Okay.
And we might want to investigate whether or not we could be one of their. Cases because the state gives them money to do those kinds of studies.
Amy, would you send me a link on that? That'd be awesome. Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of round the corner with the final two, and then I'm going to really speed up here because I know Tom's going to kill me. The next two implementation priorities are a comprehensive public facilities plan, and this is really on the shoulders, frankly, of the Select Board. And the Town Hall and School Committee to really come together and pull together a municipal plan that shows the ability to fund both school and town buildings. And it really falls in line with supporting the existing committees that we already have up and working related to Town Hall Building, but also the new one that we're just spinning up now related to School Facilities Committee. And part of it is building a timeline for the community. And a funding plan that could show how we could do all of these infrastructure improvements for town and and school, but also. Layer in a potential infrastructure improvements to public safety and harbor master. I just. As a committee, we sort of saw this dynamic beginning to kick up, and I think it's only going to get worse of. Everybody has a facility project that they want to see, and the the way that they unfortunately get that project down is by knocking down somebody else's. And that's just not a way that we're going to be successful. In terms of of getting these projects done. We've already seen that it's possible to knock down the Town Hall Building Committee. So I I don't think that we want to see that dynamic play out any further with, you know, Town Hall V four. Or our schools. And so we need to set ourselves up to be successful across multiple projects. And it's going to require. Quite a bit of consensus building, and I think that's squarely on the shoulders of Chris Senior and the Select Board to help and and frankly, capital budgets and some other committees to help us. Build that kind of consensus and build that plan. And then last but not least, we did one.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Real quick, Katie, who steers that right now on that public facility? Is there any, is there anything discussions behind the scenes? That are taking place about that now? Because as you said, there are some big projects that are being starting to be discussed here. So. You know, because I I didn't even think about that, but you're right. If. Over the next five years, if three to five, three or four of these things start coming ahead, they they're going to try to cut each other down to get their project approved. So it's a great point to try to maybe have a. Have it be a collaborative effort, but it, you know, it's it is one of those things. The only if it if we wait a couple of years for it. That ship could have said may have sailed, you know?
So I think the 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 Select Board has has put this front stage in terms of their goals for this year to really work on that comprehensive funding. Public facilities plan and begin to build that build that consensus because frankly, Town Hall is coming to us soon. By soon, I mean like special town meeting this fall and. And you can you can kind of see a dynamic that could play out where that gets knocked down because people want to preserve funding for school, potential. School improvements in the future. And then, you know, five years later, when or three years later, when the school improvements are being recommended, the Town Hall folks come back and. So it's just a vicious cycle and we have to break it. So that that really is the conversation. I I think the Select Board understands. The the task in front of them. I think the hardest part is that the numbers are so big that they can't hide behind. They can't hide behind doing this all out of cash or cash flow. Like, we have to figure out a debt funding schedule that. We're going to be comfortable with as a community, and that's that's really the tough. It's going to be debt override, but. It it's going to need that kind of consensus building on the funding's front and on the priorities front. So it's it's a big task. But I do think that they they have committed to make that a priority. And then last but not least, on historical preservation, we wanted to make sure that one of our next five began to address some of the community character issues that we hear. You know, we obviously attempted to address a small piece of that through the land alteration by law that we passed this spring with your help. But there's pieces of it that are coming, both on the zoning front, longer term, that we'd like to look at through the zoning bylaw working group. But also there's some smaller or shorter term projects associated with the captain's walk and the potential re-envisioning and relocation of the Fisherman's Well. And this is all really tied to work that we already have in process with the CHI. And Elm Street Corridor. So this is really recognizing that there is going to be some opportunities to do some historical. Preservation and some historical upgrades to what we have in town, starting with Captain's Walk and Fisherman's Well. So that's so those are the next five. It's, as I said, land use focus, sidewalk priorities, Route three A, climate adaptation and sea level rise. Comprehensive public facilities plan and historic preservation efforts. So the the tough thing, and I'm I'm going to sort of end the conversation here, is that to get all this work done, I mean, this is kind of the. The the slide that makes you go, oh, shit. We identified twelve grants, eight kinds of community focus and collaboration that needs to happen, two big areas for consensus building, one around. Public facilities and the other about around zoning bylaw redrafting, and then the need for some real FTEs and consulting. And and this is where. You know, frankly, we have to step up as a community to be able to support financially the FTEs and consulting that we need in order to be able to move this plan forward. But as. Committees, I mean, I sort of highlighted here some of the areas where I think the. The Planning Board and Master Plan Implementation can work together. You know, around downtown revitalization, around sidewalks, around. Elm Street Corridor and zoning bylaw. So this is really the resources that we need to muster and part of. Master Plan Implementation's job, hopefully with your help, is to is to be that squeaky wheel to make sure that we're putting in place. And we're developing these areas of resources that we need to be successful. So with that, I'm going to end the presentation and. Answer any questions, but I I wanted just to kind of unveil the next layer, and we will certainly. Be back to you to talk about sidewalks, be back to talk to you about village revitalization. And if there's other areas that the planning board wants to. You know, input or collaborate with us on, we're more than welcome to partner. All right.
Sorry about that. Smoke detectors went off.
No, no worries.
I was looking around my own house. I thought it was one of mine.
Katie, thank you very much for your continuing work on behalf of town. It is very unusual to have a citizen take on such. Elaborate and complex problems in support of a small town. And you should be congratulated for. Your ability to to keep your committee together and to keep people engaged. And you provide us credibility, which is usually supposed to be the other way around. And so for for all of your work, thank you very much. We wouldn't be anywhere near as. I think confident about what planning could do in town had it not been for the work that you've been doing.
No, thank you. And and listen, you guys have been great partners. I mean, you guys have been Clark and and Tom, Paul Cleary, you know, Amy. All of you have been doing some heavy lifting on the working groups, and I think that's been kind of a seed change. To have you guys involved in those projects, collaborating with other committees. Versus, you know, one is enjoyable sometimes just to get out of your own committee and and do work in the broader town, but I also think it's more impactful in terms of like the end results. So I I I think that. That downtown or village revitalization is really one that the planning board can have an important role in. And and certainly when it comes to sidewalks, like. You guys are going to be an important moneymaker, hopefully, for us, if we can get the plan together. Really embolden us to know what we want and ask for it in these.
Chip away at those at those projects.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's thirty one or thirty two of them, so we've got plenty to choose from in terms of segments that we need.
Thank you, Katie.
Stick around and since Tom is going to jump into zoning bylaw, I'm just going to ride shotgun here and listen on this one.
Keep me in line.
No, 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 no. I'm I'm here to support.
Okay. All right, guys. Thank you for setting aside time for this, and I hope you all. Read the voluminous materials I sent over the weekend. I did a memo to try to explain it. I'm probably going to need an hour. It depends how much feedback we give it. You know, I I try not to go further than that, so. But let's just jump right in. For the for the big picture, the zoning working group as part of the Master Plan Committee is charged with looking at the zoning bylaw. And even though we've made a number of changes to the bylaw over time, maybe every year, there's some kind of zoning article. The real core of it, the table of uses, the table of area regulations, hasn't been looked at comprehensively since nineteen eighty six. Before that, it might have been nineteen sixty eight. There might have been some changes in the seventies, but. You know, we we've added on a lot of articles to the bylaw fourteen through twenty two. There's a lot of inconsistencies. When those things got tacked on, we just sunsetted one of them last spring because it wasn't being used. And and so we're looking at. A reworking of the bylaw, not only for housekeeping because of all these add-ons and inconsistencies. But actually actually looking at some substantive changes. Particularly in the table of area regulations and the table of use regulations. In the meantime, though, rather than try to. Redo the whole bylaw in one fell swoop and present it to town meeting that way. There are other issues that we are addressing as we go along. And we had the lot clearing bylaw that was last spring, and we have six bylaws and two two proposed for this fall. And a lot of them are what I would call putting out fire issues on. Trying to deal with some of the issues that we've confronted, like the definition of height and how it's measured and things of that sort. We also have a change to an existing regulation proposed and a new regulation proposed. And. The new regulation is also part of an overall philosophy as we redo the zoning bylaw. To take out a lot of stuff that's in it. Like application requirements, how many copies of this, how many copies of that? And move those into regulations where they can be easily changed, deal with changes in technology. You know, whether we get, for example, electronic copies rather than paper copies. So there is a movement to make to slim down the bylaw by taking out a lot of administrative stuff and turning them into regulations. And 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 the newer of the two, the new regulation of the two submitted to you tonight. Is is an expression of that because it's actually taken from another town's bylaw, but rather than make it a bylaw here, we think it's better suited as a regulation. So. Start with the common driveway that I talked about at our last meeting, which is an existing regulation that we have. And. These two regulate, the amendments to this regulation, the new regulation, and then some of the bylaw definitional changes. All have a common theme in that we're trying to define and. Strengthen our our description of. Ways and streets and roads, driveways, however you want to call them. And tighten them up so that when we are dealing with projects, be they A and Rs or not. As we have been more frequently that are, you know, trying to develop backlots and using old ways. We're really focusing on the whole idea of adequacy of the way. And so there's a common theme running through. These two regulations and zoning articles, the proposed Article Three. And in the, I'll just divert for a minute to the to the new regulation, the access one. That's setting out to make it clear to people in the town that we have three primary ways of accessing residential lots in town. And it came up in the zoning working group that one member asked questions, you know, and. Unfortunately, people confuse way, roads, street. We're trying to make this a lot clearer in this whole body of changes that we're proposing. And so those three ways are common driveway. A private way that is not a subdivision control generated road, and then a subdivision control generated road, which can be public or private. And we are trying to make very clear that each of them have a graduated level of how wide they should be, how they should be built, and how long they the maximum length of them can be. So with the changes to common driveway, with this new regulation that we're adding. And then with already the existing rules under the subdivision control bylaw, we have three very clear categories of access. Three measures of construction width, length. Design that we can then apply as we are looking at projects that are. Using, you know, proposing to use a way that might otherwise strike you as substandard. So on the common, yep, go ahead.
Quick question. On the common driveway standards, that's not a zoning bylaw. That's a planning board. Regulation. So that would be a vote of the planning board, right? And there's no. Super majority requirement. It would just be a majority vote to make to to make the change and then.
We discussed, yeah, we discussed that last week, and when I get to the part of whether to takeaways from tonight's meeting that I'd like to have, we'll we'll discuss that. But. We and and we are, because of the ease of doing regulations for things that don't need. Bylaw level and town meeting level approval. Overall, we're looking at lots of areas in the existing zoning bylaw that we can change from bylaw to regulations.
But it's not a heavy lift. It's.
No.
It's not a town meeting argument.
Correct, correct. All right. So for the common driveway, there's. There's one, a couple of organizational things. The there's a new section one, a new introduction to it that Katie found from other communities. I think Hingham and Wellesley. It's either a combination of Hingham and Wellesley, or it's one or the other. Our existing section one in our regulations kind of gets right into enforcement and hammering people, and that's fine. But not as an introduction. So we just moved that to the new section fourteen. So our existing section one, we're proposing to make section fourteen. There is some changes in section five, section eight. And a new section thirteen. Which are all asks of the DPW. We had a meeting. which are all asks of the DPW. We had a meeting last week with Brian Joyce, and he went over all these things. And those are just some design standards that he was looking for in those sections. The real meat of this and the real substantive change is, is in section two and section three. Right now, we are, allow up to eight lots to be served by a common driveway. And within those eight lot limits, we have two levels of, two or three levels of design and construction requirements. We are extremely generous. We are an outlier amongst communities in Massachusetts in this respect. And, and by the way, that's another common theme through some of these changes that are presented to you tonight that is to stop making Cohasset be an outlier from the rest of the Commonwealth. Woody did, Woody Chittick did extensive research on this, a number of towns. And the average seems to be that the most lots that are allowed are for common driveway in other bylaws is two or three. The proposal in front of you is three. There is one member of the zoning working group who thinks it should be two. And I promised him that I would mention that and bring it up to your attention. That's the big change is to reduce it from the possibility of eight lots to three lots or two lots, depending on how you'd like to go. As far as the design criteria for the width and the, the width of it and the type of construction, Brian Joyce and DPW suggested we pick the criteria on our current chart that would be for four to order six lots, I believe. So it would be three lots, a design criteria of width and size that stated in our bylaw regulation right now. And then section three is the length. Our current regulation allows for a common driveway. Whose is that, Clark? Yours or mine? Allows for a length of 750 feet for a common driveway. Again, we are an outlier in that respect. And so the suggestion is to limit the length of a common driveway to 350 feet. In the hierarchy of different types of access, just so you know, we are, would have a common driveway, serves three lots, 18 feet of pavement within a 40 foot, or well, a 24 foot right of way and a 40 foot easement, 350 feet length. The private way that is not a subdivision road would be 20 feet wide, 500 foot length, and under our existing subdivision control regs, I believe it's 24 feet of pavement and it's 1500 feet in length. So we're going to have a very clear hierarchy of what you can do with each of these different points of access. So unless there's any questions on that, what I'm looking for here tonight is an approval to go forward with this so that Lauren can schedule it for a public hearing in September. I believe we need to publish it in the newspaper two consecutive weeks or whatever it is we have to do, but did you do find that out yet, Lauren?
Yes, it is. It's two weeks.
Okay.
So Tom, do you want to vote on this?
Well, I first want to see if anybody has any questions.
It's true. I, I just want to know from a procedural.
Yeah, for tonight on this one, I am looking for us to move forward to schedule this for a public hearing in September.
All right. I, I will agree with what you've done. I think it abides by many of the things that we're currently addressing or dealing with and that they will be addressed. Eric?
I'm on board with it too. I think this is the way to go to, to start restricting development in the town. So it's by bylaws like this. And then, you know, we, we've got enough development going on here. There's plenty of different places to live. So I, I am in favor of these more restrictive bylaws with regards to the development of it. And I, I definitely would be in favor of Tom moving forward.
I appreciate, I appreciate that you want to move forward. I wouldn't call it restricting so much as I would say that we're
clarifying.
We're, we're, we're dealing with the issue we, that has come before is that making sure that access to properties are adequate and safe for both the people who are living there and the commercial vehicles and emergency vehicles that have to serve those properties. So, thank you.
That sounds noble the way you're putting it, Tom. That's
All right. Tom is asking us for a vote of approval to take, to organize a public hearing for this document.
That, that, that's fine. I, I did have some questions about
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The document. The, you know, the, the, the first thing that kind of jumps out at me is, you know, one, we had this regulation, but we never see the follow-up. It, it, and according to our regulation, it, it, it is the, the highway surveyor, right? Whoever that is. Is that Carl Sestido? I don't know. Is it Brian Joyce? I'm not sure.
In, in, in terms of what follow-up are you asking? I mean, Brian, Brian, like I said, met with us last week and he put input into this, into some of the changes that.
Yeah. No, no, I, I, in, in terms of implementation. So somebody says, I want to use a common driveway. This is what I want to do. What do you? We don't see what's proposed.
Well, that's, you know, where it is, is the person's coming in with a development. The first person they're seeing is John Allen and the building department. John, John has to enforce this and
I know, but I guess I'm wondering strategically, if we're reviewing subdivisions and we're reviewing A and Rs, but we don't review these common driveways, might it make sense for the planning board to require a review? I mean, to take a look at what's being done. It's, it's along the same kind of hype, uh, uh, line of development and access issues that we, that's already in our wheelhouse. We have the regulation, but then we never see what is gonna, what's proposed and what's done. For example, you know, a, a private way might work for three houses until they want to add four. So they might design something for, for the three to five. And then, I'm just using the example. I know you want to change the numbers, but knowing that there's potential for development in the, in the future, we might say, oh, you, you've got these, this extra area that, that could be developed. So we would want it to be done to the, to the over five standard.
Correct. And, and the other, the other regulation that's coming, this new one we're proposing will do just that because it will, it has a provision that was added to it to say, if you have a private way and you are going to add, add the number of lots served by it, you are going to have to upgrade. And that was, that was one of Brian's insistences that there would be upgrade if you add to a pre-existing private way.
That was another question that I had, but, but first, I, I guess the first issue that I wanted to get a handle on is should the planning board review common driveway proposals? As a part of, a strategic part of A and Rs and other things that we're doing already?
I'll, I'll say
Or should we just let it go to the, the highway surveyor, whoever that is?
I'll, I'll say this from the, from the, the legal perspective about A and Rs. We are constricted by state law, what we can do with A and Rs.
I understand.
We, we can only look at the adequacy of the frontage. And we're going to get later to a definition, the new definition of frontage to help us with that.
No, no, A and R is, is, is frontage and, and access, frontage.
All right. So, so now with a clear distinction and a clear criteria and requirements for how a common driveway or the next step up, the private non-subdivision road is built, we will have some ammunition for either the refusal to endorse an A and R or denial of a project that's before, maybe for site plan review or, or a special permit. But like many other things in our bylaw, it's going to take our building inspector to be on slash zoning enforcement officer. That's his other title, to be on top of this and enforce it. So let, let, I'll give you the example of if legally, for some reason, we can't look at the adequacy of a, a way in an A and R proposal.
We can, we can.
All right.
That's definitely in our wheelhouse.
Then, 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 then we're not hurt. This, this is fine. Then we're going to be able to do it.
And so I would say, you know, it just stepping off from, from your, your just most recent point is if we look at an A and R and it looked like they have some kind of access and they're, they're saying it's going to be an improved common driveway that conforms with the, the standards. Doesn't it make sense for the planning board to review these common driveways? I don't think there's an awful lot of them. I don't think there'll be a lot coming. But, but I could be wrong. I mean, if somebody wants to build a house on an inadequate way and it, just one house or whatever, and then, then it would, it, it would, it could come up. But we might have more by increasing the, the strictness of the, of the regulation.
So Clark, do you want to make a, do you want to make a recommendation to modify what Tom has?
Well, I, I like to have the discussion. Should the planning board review, should the planning board review common driveway applications as a part of our regular duties?
Let me
As what? As what? A site plan review, a special permit? We have to put it in some kind of legal context.
Let me, let me let Katie talk. She's had her hand up for a while. Katie?
Thank you. You know, I was, I was just reflecting on the fact that, you know, number nine is really the one that you're reacting to, Clark, which is this highway supervisor recommendation. I mean, you do have the ability to review it as directed. I mean, in, in number nine, it says that it'll be reviewed by the highway supervisor, whereas directed or another designated the planning board. So if you want to make yourselves a designated review this stuff, you certainly can. You don't have to have the highway supervisor. I think that's what you're saying, correct?
Well, what, what I'm saying is, I, I understand about the highway supervisor and the building inspector. But I, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if the, the additional step is to have the planning board review proposed common driveways as a part of our regular duties. I still think that the highway surveyor, whoever that is, and the billing inspector have a role in making sure that what's done is what was submitted to the planning board. But I'm, I'm, I'm asking for an extra step because I, I think it
Let me just say something.
I think it was part and parcel to what, what we do with A and Rs. And, and there's a sense of fairness with that too.
Okay. So let Tom react to it.
All right. We, we, we just all agreed that we have the ability right now under an A and R where, where to, where most of the time, this is when this will come up, to review the adequacy of a proposed driveway. Otherwise, you know, when you say review, that has a certain legal connotation. That means site plan or special permit. And it means creating a bylaw around it. Because, you know, the authority for us to give a permit or not give a permit has got to be expressed in the bylaw, not in the regulation. I, I, I think we're adequate. If, if we can already review the adequacy of a common driveway in an A and R proposal, we're covered. We're, 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 we're making a judgment on it and we can either endorse the A and R or not endorse the A and R as a consequence of that.
Okay. So, so what you're saying is if, if an A and R is proposed and we find that the, the current access is not adequate, then we would say, come back with a common driveway design and we'll, we'll either endorse or not endorse the A and R relative to what you've, what you've put together.
Correct. And, and that's section nine is the highway surveyor supervising the physical construction to make sure it's built the way it's supposed to be built.
Yeah, yeah. That's an important, that's an important step. I'm, and, and I'm not saying that that should be eliminated because we're not, we're not all civil engineers. So
Right. And the building inspector should not be issuing a building permit unless this is being followed.
Right. It, it, and I, I would also say if there are existing, there, there's another question that I had on my notes was existing versus new A and Rs. If you have an existing lot versus newly created lots, what would the trigger be to, to have it? And it might be buried in your residential property access regulation. I, I read it, but I, I might not have, I might have skimmed over that.
All right.
Scanned, skimmed.
The, the
Are you, are you saying that it doesn't, whatever you've, whatever's in place, it might be adequate, it might not be adequate, but all new building permits will have to conform to the revised?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but an existing lot exactly.
Common driveway standards.
Yeah, no, but even if, yes, everybody's going to have to conform going forward to the new common driveway standard. And they are going to be limited to only having three lots being served by that common driveway. If they exceed three lots, they are going to go to the new regulation, which is going to have a design and construction criteria for what is known as the private street slash way that is not a subdivision road. And so, yeah, so it, it depends what's coming before us, but everybody's going to comply. And it's going to be driven by the number of lots being served by the, the access road.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't understand completely, but it sounds like what you're saying is that there would be no distinction between a, a brand new common driveway and an existing non-conforming common driveway. All new building permits would be required to be on, if you will, or have access from a currently complying common driveway.
Correct. If you, if you have an existing common driveway that is serving eight houses, your grandfather. If you have an existing common driveway that's serving two houses, you're going to be limited to adding one new one.
Right.
Otherwise, if you want to go beyond three, you're going to have to design something other than a common driveway. You're going to have to design a street, a private street, but a street under the standards of the next regulation.
Right. Okay.
So Clark?
My general comment about the, about the bylaw is it's quite a bit less restrict, more restrictive than what we have in place now. And I, I, my, my recollection from the common driveway standards was it was set up to provide some flexibility. And it, it, it is instead of, it seems like, it seems like this will may limit the number of houses that might be added in the town of Cohasset because of existing conditions. There's no way that they could conform to.
The consensus view of the zoning working group is a, we, we are clearly an outlier on this. There is no town that allows eight houses, maybe one, two, three. We are an outlier on this. And then the consensus view is it's inherently unsafe to have that many houses served by a common driveway as opposed to a better built, wider built roadway. That's the thinking, the, the thinking beyond this is safety.
So we, Clark, at this point, we have, I'm going to take a leap and say that we have a vote of three to approve this particular configuration. And well, it's Eric, you, myself, and it's up to Clark. If he, Clark says yes, he says yes. If he says no, still we have a vote of three to approve this.
Did you guys take a vote while I was running around?
Yes, we did.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, we're just, we just, we just want to move it forward to the
Well, you don't, you took a vote. You don't need my vote then.
Okay.
If you want to have a public hearing, then that's fine.
Okay. So, so let's move on to the next item.
Quick, quick other answer. Three lots limit or a two lot limit?
Can I show the folks the data? Cause I think it's pretty shocking how
Yeah, show, show the data. That would be great. We have data for everything, by the way.
Yeah. So, I mean, here's where Cohasset is up to, up to eight. It's, Carlisle is the next biggest at six, but it's like two, three, two, 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 three. I mean, it is, it is shocking how out of, out of the lane we are on this one. And similarly with length, I mean, everybody else is 500 feet or less. And we're at 750. So again, we're outlier there. On the width, you know, it, it sort of ranges a little bit, but you know, it, it sort of ranges a little bit, but.
So the, the majority is a two lot by right. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, we're, we're, the, the proposal is three, but like I said, there's one sentiment on the zoning working group that it should be two. So I just need a quick answer going forward for publication purposes of the revised bylaw. Are we doing three lot limit or two lot limit? I'm okay, I'm okay with three.
Uh, it's split pretty 50/50 whether it's two or three.
Well, you know, again, I, I would say that um, what, probably one of the explanations for, for this regulation uh, having flexibility is, is um, because of our uh, ledge and, and wetland uh, configuration compared to other communities. Um, so if all you're asking is two or three, I'd say leave it at three.
Eric?
Three's fine.
Amy?
I guess I'll go with three.
Okay, alright. Alright, we'll proceed on that basis. Thank you. Alright, the other, the next one, as I was trying to explain, is called the residential property access regulations. This is borrowed from a Plymouth bylaw. And what this does essentially is create design, construction, length and width standards for the means of access of a private way, private, well, I'm gonna call it a private street slash way because we're gonna change the definition to read street slash way. Private street that is not built according to subdivision control standards. So, we, it, we, we have subdivision control standards, we've had common driveway standards that we just amended, but we don't have any standards for what gets built in between those. This would provide that. And again, the operative, the operative uh, provisions are that you would have a 20-foot wide pavement within the 40-foot easement and the right of way. You'd have a 500-foot length. And um, as what uh, Brian wanted, if there is an existing private way, of which we have many, and the preamble, that opening paragraph mentions that, you know, we, we happen to have a lot of private ways and very few relatively speaking, public ways. Uh, if there is a, a, an intensification of the use being served by a private, a private way, there would need to be upgrades in the construction and drainage. So.
I'd like to hear the example of Ocean Ledge in terms of how the intensification happened over like a decade, cause it's pretty shocking to see how the use relative to the abutters changes, cause it changes and there's no upgrades required to the way.
Uh, please go ahead.
This, this was data unfortunately circulated very late today that you might not have seen, but.
I've seen it.
Okay.
So, this is, this is Ocean Ledge or Cemetery Road, and um, there are there are um, 11 houses currently off of it, um, with a 12th, 10 Ocean Ledge that's on the market currently. Um, but just to give you kind of a span, it, it started with two homes, 796 Jerusalem, which was built in 1888, and 20 Ocean Ledge, or what was at the time 20 Cemetery Lane, which was built in 1920. So there were two, there were two homes supported by Cemetery Lane. Um, flash forward in 1950s, 60s, two additional homes were built, 790 and 790A, two ranch homes. So, at the end of the, at the beginning of the 70s, you had four homes off of Cemetery Lane. And it sat like that from 1970 until 1999, when you had an explosion and you had, at that time, an additional two homes added off of a common driveway which accessed um, 796, and you had another um, one, two, three, four homes added as a result of additional um, development on Ocean Ledge. So all of a sudden, you've gone from a, a private way that was supporting four homes up through 1999 to a private way that was supporting 11 homes. With no oversight and no, and, and there was an attempt by the planning board to have that discussion, but there was no follow-through on the town. And some of this was, you know, occurred, four of the homes were put in in the early 2000s, and then another three were put in, in, you know, 2015, 2016, 2017. So the passage of time makes this hard to track, but it's also our lack of regulations that has allowed a private way to go from four, supporting four homes to 11 with very little oversight as to whether that way is capable of managing that level of traffic.
Alright, so, so the point of this, we found this in Plymouth, and um, it fills the gap that we don't have, you know, a gap that we've had between regulation of a common driveway and regulation of a subdivision controlled road. So, it's simply providing the standards for upgrade and for use. And, and, you know, Ocean Ledge is an example, Diab's an example, that we, we have a number, you know, Dolan is an example. We have a number of these examples around town. And as development is going to intensify perhaps on some of these roads, again, this is just an assurance that it's brought up to a safe uh, and adequate design and construction standard.
Well, um, uh, just a quick question, is this a proposed regulation that we would have a public hearing and then vote on it?
Yes, and.
And then it would be adopted immediately?
Correct. For, for, for my, for my ask of this one, if you are comfortable with going ahead with it now, we can schedule it simultaneously with the common driveway.
Well, you might, you might as well, um.
Yeah, alright, that's fine. I think it's fairly straightforward, but.
Could the two can be combined?
No, no, because again, we wanna make a clear distinction between three different types of access that are allowed for residential properties. Common driveway down here.
Yep.
Right, private, non-subdivision in the middle, and then at the highest level of construction and design is the subdivision control road.
Right, right. You know, interestingly enough, um, I have a extra lot on Dolan Lane, which is a 10-foot wide paved lane. But it, I'm just, but it predates uh, it predates zoning and it predates the 1952 date um, um, under uh, 40A 81FF. So it exists as a, a basically an approved subdivision? So I don't think I'd have to upgrade based on, on this, but the A and R that was approved on Dolan Lane uh, for Stasco about a, a year and a half ago, which is a new um, a new lot that would have to, it doesn't have that same uh, 81FF protection.
Alright, I, I, I want you to look at paragraph seven of this regulation.
Uh, so I'm just using that as an example, something I know. Again, Katie lives on Black Rock Lane, which is like 15 feet wide? So if someone were to add a house, I mean, have, has all, all the houses been added already on, on Black Rock Lane, Kate?
No, we've got um, we've got probably two, maybe three, based on open frontage that could be built out still.
So, but the interesting thing is, um, um, you know, like the ownership of Black Rock Lane, like the ownership can go to the middle of the way so that everybody sort of owns the way. And I don't know if that's the case. In, in the case of Dolan Lane, the ownership of the way is set up in segments. The first 200 feet is one owner, the middle 500 feet is me, then the, the other, um, the, the remainder is, is to the middle of the way. It's all, it's all wacky.
Dolan Way, Dolan Way is, is, is a relatively unique type of roadway, um, given the way it is struck, where it lies, how it lies within lots rather than between lots. It, it's, it's, you know, and I don't wanna get into the, I don't get into the.
I'm just, I think it's great to have examples that were.
I know, but I'm just saying that Dolan Way, you know, that court case might have been decided a different way. I don't wanna get into all of that analysis of that case, but paragraph seven of this regulation is not found in the Plymouth bylaw that we borrowed this from. It has been added on by us. And I know Woody speaks to this quite a bit because, you know, the concept of ancient way is thrown in people in planning boards faces everywhere in this Commonwealth. And paragraph seven is trying to stay that, okay, you have a way that existed prior to the subdivision control law in Cohasset. And by the way, we nailed down the date finally, it's February 25, 1954. Or if you caught, categorized it as an ancient way, which a lot of people use as a term of art, that isn't going to by itself determine adequacy. So the intent of this regulation is to, is to intend for upgrade for anybody, including your, you, you're, you're giving your example, I understand that, but certainly something new that came along recently, but I mean, I think there would be an argument to be made of whether you could do anything as of right on that 10-foot wide piece of road.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't know. I mean, it's probably above um, my pay, pay grade for lit, a, a land use attorney to make the argument. But I, I guess the point, the point I was trying to make is to use a couple of examples and see how it plays itself out in our thinking. If the, if the goal is to make everything basically a subdivision roadway um, in town and, 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 and focus on the, the, the safety and adequacy um, aspect. Um, I, 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 I'm just wondering, what are, what are the possible exceptions and is that okay? Or do you try to um, make it so that it applies to absolutely everything, no matter what?
So that, so this isn't making it a subdivision. This is truly make in-between. So like, first off, I mean, a sub, a full subdivision private way is, you know, 40 feet wide with a lot of bells and whistles. What we're suggesting here in the non-subdivision private way is, is literally 20 feet paved plus three feet shoulder, so a width of 26 with an easement of 40. And again, it was meant to, it was meant to get at that middle ground between common driveway and a full subdivision private way, but with enough of the safety issues being addressed for ade- adequacy and ac- access. You know, the reality is, is that there needs to be, there needs to be a standard, otherwise you're gonna have situations where four becomes 11 and nothing is done to change the road. You know, on Black Rock Road, what is the tipping point in terms of like when 14 feet is adequate? I, I, my argument is we've probably already crossed that threshold a long time ago, but when we added 62 Black Rock Road, should, should that owner have been responsible for moving us from 14 to 26 feet wide? Like, there, there, there has to be a point at which the conversation moves to safety around the, the adequacy of the, of the way, and that's what.
Well, I agree. You know, it's, it's sort of logistically complex though, like using the Black Rock example. It, it would require uh, additional easements from property owners in order to even allow uh, a developer to, to, to um, uh, take on the, the burden of, of improving the existing.
So I'm gonna keep back, I'm gonna keep back what I said about width, but what Tom has suggested, which I, what I happen to agree with, if you look at six, for existing, for existing private ways, the um, increase in the number of houses would be brought up to only some of the standards for a new, and those, it's for C, for D and for E. So, the width would not have to be um, adjusted, but the construction of the way, which is an issue um, in terms of like the quality of construction.
Right.
Drainage, um, and then flooding, which are kind of like the, the, the things that kill um, a lot of private ways in town. Um, we have no stormwater on Black Rock, it's a huge issue. Every new home and every new piece of asphalt just kills us, cause it, it doesn't have anywhere to go. Um, you know, the, the quality of the road absolutely makes a difference. I mean, we're, we're at that point where between all the Amazon and all the houses on the street, like, we're not, we're crumbling. Um, so, yeah, I think there, there are things that need to be brought up on an existing way, and that's what's being addressed here. It's not, it's not the width. Um.
Well, yeah, okay, um, and the width.
Can I say something which is, I want this discussion to conclude in two minutes?
Okay, the, the width, the planning board has been somewhat flexible with subdivisions in the past. Um, Cook Estate and I think Conahasset uh, subdivision had 18 feet of, of roadway width. The same um, uh, you know, 40 feet of, of area um, for Conahasset. Um, um, but, but not uh, for uh, Cook Estate, cause it was one parcel. And uh, I, I just, the, the thing is, I, I think it's interesting and, and I, I just wanna make sure that that we're, if we're trying to cover everything moving forward, that uh, I'm just wondering what the exceptions might be.
If, if, if you had the ability to waive portions of the subdivision control law, then you will tomorrow because we're not changing that bylaw. I, I just, we, we're filling a gap of sta-, we, we don't even have the standards to apply to a road. You know, whether we choose to enforce them, whether we choose to waive some, that's a future decision for a future planning board. But right now, we don't even have the standards to discuss enforcing or waiving.
Sure.
And we, and we wanna create at least a minimum standard of construction and safety for everything that should be the starting point. And then we can deal with particular situations as they come up.
Okay, I want to uh, call for a vote um, on this uh, amendment here.
The vote, the vote would be to proceed with this to a public hearing on the same track as the common driveway.
Alright, thank you. Eric Potter? Eric. Uh, I'm gonna vote and say, uh, I agree to, yes. Tom Callahan?
Alright.
Clark Brewer?
Yeah, I vote to, to have a public hearing then.
Okay, Eric Potter? Well, we still have a, a majority here, so let's move on.
Alright, so let's, let's move on. I wanna keep things flowing, keep, not keep you here all night. So there's.
Yeah.
As you can see, there's six zoning uh, bylaw proposals. Uh, some of these have been percolating for some time. Some of these I describe as putting out fires of issues we've had to deal with that have been vexing. Some of them are proactive. One of them is fulfilling a promise we've made to the community and, you know, most recently to abutters at Windy Hill that we will deal with the issue of ledge protection. So the first one is height. It's been bandied about quite a bit.
Tom, can I just ask you for a minute? Would you make an assessment of what you think is going to be the most lengthy discussed item? And let's start on the easiest one and clear out the.
I'm, I'm going in order because they're pretty easy in order.
Okay, alright, great.
The last one's gonna be, the last two are gonna be the, the one, the last two are where the text is not finalized yet by the zoning working group.
Okay.
The other, well, the, the fourth one might not be because it's brand new, but uh, it's not, it's not hard to understand. But one, one, two and three are pretty real set in stone from the zoning working group at this point, so.
Okay, so then let's move on.
The height, the height one is, it's dealing with both aspects of our current definition of height. What is the top point? Currently, on a peaked roof, the top point is the midpoint of the peak roof, which theoretically then lays for another five feet of structure above that, which if you go to the max, could be a 40-foot high structure. Never made any logical sense. I don't know why it was ever there. But the first part of it is to change that. The highest point on a peak roof will be the peak. The highest point on a flat or manzar roof is the highest point on that flat surface. The other part of this is to change the um, measurement of where the bottom point of measure is. And this comes directly out of our most recent experience at 580. Um, we've supposedly implemented this as a policy since 580. But what it's doing is creating um, when you have varying grade, as we mostly do, we rarely have a very flat, perfectly flat property. Um, it, we're increasing the number of measurement points so to determine what is the median. And we're making clear that the measurement is from the pre-existing grade, not post-construction grade, so nobody comes in adds five foot of fill and thinks they put a 35-foot building on the top of that. So it's pretty straightforward. It's to clear up those two points. Um, more measurements for the bottom measure. Top measure is the top, the logical top of any type of roof you can think of.
And, and the height, the maximum height is still 35?
Well, well, again, the, our, the, the definition in the current bylaw does not deal with the, the number. The number is in the table of area regulations, but we will get to that.
Okay, so then let's uh, I'd like to see if I can get a vote on this. Um, uh.
Well, here, here's, here's. Well, here, here's, here's, I want to remind everybody.
Discuss it, if, if we can't discuss it, then we should um, table it and put it on another agenda.
Can I, can I just, can I just say what the, the need here tonight is? We have a formal process for recommending or not recommending zoning bylaws under chapter forty-eight, section five, that will be coming in the fall. That's where we will make votes on these things. All I'm looking for tonight on all six of these is input and feedback. We're at a stage where we thought it appropriate, we, the zoning working group thought it appropriate that we get the planning board's input on this before we go much further with the text. So really, I'm just looking for feedback, not votes tonight.
Okay.
Our votes.
I'm happy to give feedback.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Go ahead, Clark, please.
Yep, um, so I think the, the, the base definition, the pre-construction grade or post-construction grade, whichever is less is, is, is great and the number of points, but it, it, it's supposed to be within ten feet of the foundation currently, and it's the mean or average. And then we don't have a definition in the bylaw for mean or average. You know, I've always, when I've, when I've done these kind of calculations for planning board, um, for the, for this planning board to double check what the developer has done. Um, I've gone to Webster and read the mean definition, because that's what it says, mean. And um, it, it's basically average.
Um, well, it's not.
It, yeah, it's, it is. In, in Webster's is, is, is average. So, but, but our definite, but for some reason, it, it hasn't been used correctly. Instead of the average, which should be, if it's a evenly sloped piece of property, then um, the average would be the higher low, and that makes perfect sense. But in the case of five-eighty where we saw there was a big ledge outcropping and most of it was at a certain elevation, um, quite a bit lower that, um, so I think the number of points, you know, that you know, one, where the new construction is, and then that out, outside line, both of those are, are critical. And if it's a, a matrix of, of twenty lineal, twenty, a point per twenty lineal feet of that ten-foot section, um, that's, that's fine. I didn't think the language that you had there, I thought, thought it needed tweaking, and I don't have a specific recommendation for tweaking that language. Um, so.
All right, so from the distance from the building, we're saying a consistent point between zero to ten feet from the building. So, again, allowing for some flexibility as opposed to what we have today. The idea that it should be the, the resulting measurement that we're going to use as the bottom measurement should be the mean, the median, or the average is a point well taken. Uh, I'm going to defer to my, my wordsmith Katie.
We don't, we don't have a, but we don't have a definition and it, and it would be, I think it would be easy, it would be easy to put in parentheses after mean, uh, average.
Well, all right, let me.
Even average in the same.
They do, they do.
In the law, in court, we don't define everything to the nth degree. We do in statutes and regulations and bylaws.
Well, I know you, I know, I understand.
Allow for the concept of plain and ordinary.
On Webster's if, if you want.
All right, well, that's what we would use, is plain and ordinary meaning. But uh, Katie, I don't know, median, we, we bandied about these words, median, average. I don't know that we settled on something, we probably should have one of them picked.
Well, the, I mean, the bottom line is, the median is uh, you know, the equidistance across in both directions, right?
Median means something different.
By the way, by the way, in the first sentence, it does say the mean, mean level. So what is the mean under Webster's definition?
So when you, when you use the word level, you've got to use the word, level is not a, a measure of height.
Katie, what do you think?
Well, I just think the language could be tightened up some.
I, I'm hearing you, I'm trying to decide how to do it.
Well, you don't have to decide right now, do you?
I'm, I'm, listen, I think we should take this, Tommy.
All right, that's fine, I'm just, I'm circling the word mean in the definition as to create a discussion, all right.
I, I, I'd like to make a point about the, the twenty feet. I actually think that that's too big of a dimension, I think it should be ten feet.
Well, it's a ten-foot offset, so it would make sense to do a ten-foot matrix.
All right. Twenty to ten, measure every ten feet within one, zero to ten feet of the building, okay. Thank you.
I mean, in practice, I'm, I'm, I do this kind of thing. So in practice, I'd measure at the face of the building and at the outside ten-foot point on a, on a, at ten-foot uh, intervals.
Okay.
All right, to come up with an average, or you could do it with a computer.
All right, want to move it along, anybody else, any other comments?
Yes, one more, on the height, I'm, I'm not for changing it to the midpoint of rafter for the thirty-five foot. I mean, we changed that, the definition to limit the height to forty feet um, a couple of years ago, but, but I'm not for, for um, changing it to the peak.
Why? It makes no frigging logical sense.
Because it, it, um, it doesn't allow design flexibility, that's all.
Clark, we looked.
I mean, as an architect, being able to, not, not that you would for every um, design, you don't go to the maximum, but um, sometimes, you know, where you're raising grade already, um, you're not going to make a house that, that looks too big by um, going to the thirty-five foot to the median, midpoint of rafter.
Clark, we've looked at a bunch of data um, from all of the large home reviews and all of the ZBA hearings over the last four or five years. And we could find only one instance where somebody went to thirty-five feet. The, the vast majority of homes, even on those under large home review, are being built to thirty, thirty-two. And so again, from a zoning bylaw working group, we felt very comfortable that putting a MAC, so basically making it thirty-five feet to the peak was not going to impact um, construction. Um, it was going to make it clearer as to what the, the construction height was in the community.
All right.
Yeah, I just, I just like, like to have design flexibility and even if you, you don't go to the maximum, I, I think it's good to have.
Flexibility is just.
So, so let's, at this point, uh.
Your com, your comment is noted and will be brought back to the.
Yeah, I actually, I actually go along with Tom's language. Uh, Eric, are you there? Nope, he's not there, okay, so let's move on.
All right, all right.
I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Bylaw number two is to reform the single lot exemption. And, and Eric, I just want to correct you, we're not eliminating the single lot exemption, it still exists because it's a creature of state law. Um, this is at the request of the zoning board, this comes under uh, the section of the bylaw dealing with non-conforming lots and structures. So they're the ones who deal with this all the time. And the single lot exemption deals with grandfathering lots, it's in chapter forty-eight, section six, so it's state law, we can't mess with it. And subsection A of our bylaw is the recitation of state law. And it is what every other town in the Commonwealth does on this subject, they just simply repeat state law. We, however, again, in our true outlier status, are the only community in the Commonwealth that we know of, although there's rumors that there might be one or two others that have subsection B. And you may recall in connection with Windy Hill, recently, most recently, Rich Henderson had done a letter or memo about the single lot exemption and Coacet's unique little quirk on it. And uh, so we all understand this, and then the bottom line is that because of our sec, subsection B, more lots can be developed than would otherwise be allowed under the state's single lot exemption law. And it's most recently came up about four years ago, where the zoning board with not a choice, had to apply it. Neighbors appealed, neighbors lost the appeal, house was built next door to them. The zoning board very, very much wants this gone because it's, it's truly unique to us, it's, and we, there's, there's a theme here for some of the things coming in the next bylaw that we, we don't want to be deviating from state law when we don't need to. And this is allowing for more grandfathering rights than the state law would allow. State law, chapter, subsection six, and our sub-paragraph A does allow for grandfathering in certain circumstances, but we just want to get rid, again, the over generosity of it.
So you're eliminating subsection state B, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there anything else you'd like to correct me on and legally clarify for me, Tom?
No, I'm sorry.
All right, great.
I didn't, I didn't mean that, but you, you said we were getting rid of it entirely, and we're not, not single lot exemption, my apologies.
Any other clarification, just let me know, Tom.
Eric, my apologies, all right, I didn't mean it in that way.
He's so smug, I mean, it's unbelievable.
All right, you know what, I'm sorry, Eric.
Hey, um, I, if the, did the zoning board actually vote on this, or is this what Woody's, what he's saying?
I don't know if the zoning board has voted on.
Okay, well, I mean, if the, if the, if the zoning board as a, as a group voted um, that they thought this was, this section B was no good. Um, it's not good for the future of the town for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, that would say something to me, I don't really have a, a feeling about it really that much one way or the other. I like built-in flexibility. Um, um, but uh, if it's been used and abused in neighborhoods in the past, that may be a reason to uh, try and get rid of it. Um, but my, my question um, about these bylaws that are town meeting, we don't do zoning bylaws for, for fall town meeting. They're, 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 they're always left for uh, spring town meeting. Fall town meetings is like budget stuff, like um, unpaid bills and stuff like that. Um, the selectmen have always, I know, I've tried in the past, the selectmen have always said, no, we, we really don't want to do that unless it's a true emergency.
And, and, and ours, Katie, I don't know if you want to deal with that.
So the conversation with the select board is that there is a lot of work that has to happen with the zoning bylaws. And, you know, we're trying to unveil this in chapters, you know, some of it is going to come out chapter by chapter, and other pieces are going to come out like a, a several chapters at a time. And the reality is to get all of this done, we're going to have to sort of break our rules of annual town meeting only. Um, and so the thought process, at least for the zoning bylaw working group, was that some of these are important. And um, to get those done at special town meeting in the fall and at least get another chapter written in some of the reforms, and then um, hopefully come back with a, a couple of chapters fully written for spring town meeting.
Uh, thank you, I like the rationale that um, this particular aspect of the bylaw not deviate from what is done as convention around the state. That seems like a legitimate reason for conformance.
And, and Clark, I'll ask Woody to make sure that before the uh, section five hearings that we get zoning board, you know, a full recommendation from the zoning.
Well, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah, he's the, he's the only member on the zoning working group from that board, so that I.
To have that, to have that um, uh, full board's uh, input.
Okay, not a problem. All right, um, zoning work, zoning bylaw number three is pre-proposed definitional changes. And these are tied with the regulations in that we're trying to get a better grip on the definition of frontage, the definition of a street or way, and a common driveway definition isn't changing much, but um, so that there is better clarity for us in working with these issues of adequacy and better understanding by applicants. So the, the common theme of the frontage and streetway uh, definition is again, to just um, um, incorporate the state law definitions under the zoning act and not to deviate with something new or different from what we have. So the, the change to the frontage definition is not as substantial from our existing. Street and way simply gets whatever we have is eliminated with a simple sentence that we're incorporating the state law. Um, in the streetway definition, in the second paragraph, we're clarifying the tie-in to the subdivision control standards and this new regulatory residential access standard. And in the common driveway, we're doing the same by referencing the common driveway regulations. On the common driveway one, we are adding the new three-lot um, limit to the bylaw definition. Now, goes against what I just said, that we're trying to move a lot of things to regulations. But in this particular case, putting the three, the new three-lot limit in here, in the definition in the bylaw, it has to be changed like a bylaw. And so it's, it's to make a, add a hurdle to any future planning board that would want to go back to the eight-lot access for a common driveway, so that's, that's why that change is made. But um, Katie, I don't know if you want to explain further, but really, we're, again, we're trying to tie everything into state laws so it's a known animal, known quantity, and hopefully gives us mu, much more clarity when we're making determinations about the adequacy of frontage or of a way.
I think the only thing I would add is that by tying it back to state law, it allows you to use um, case law to kind of defend some of the aspects of the definition versus, you know, our definition of street unfortunately has kind of language in it that you can't tie directly back to case law. And in some of these, in some of these um, discussions that you're having relative to A and Rs and um, you know, adequacy of acquis, access, I think it's going to be helpful to have that very strict parallel between what state law defines as a street and a way and you being able to draw a direct line back to this is what, this is how the case law ties in. And instead of trying to connect the dots to our, you know, language around commonly used for vehicular use, it, it just, it, it doesn't allow for a, um, I think as crisp a conversation as you could have um, and, and the ability to access and utilize case law to defend the decisions you're making.
Are any thoughts, comments, edits to this?
I agree with these changes.
But what, one thing that jumped out at me is the original language under common driveway, a driveway having access over legal frontage. And, and um, the access over legal frontage, it, it, it seems to tie the access to the legal frontage where very often for common driveways, they're, they're separated by choice. Um, I mean, the, an, an access point from a public way would be obviously on legal frontage. It, it just seems to tie the access and the, the frontage uh, together as if they were separate, normal, like regular subdivision house lots.
Well, it's the existing definition we've had for, for years, but um, the, the thought being that if you happen to have a pork chop lot, a rat tail lot, where when it meets the road is only forty feet wide, uh, that's not where you're going to put your common driveway. You'd have to locate the common driveway over at least one of the lots that has legal frontage.
Okay.
So, so it's more of a choice of where you're going, it's more of a factor in where you're going to locate it.
Right. All right.
All right, and then, you know, the part that says a common driveway might not itself serve as legal frontage is again, in our existing definition, and that's fairly uncommon around the Commonwealth. All right, any, anything else, Eric? All right.
Eric says no.
Okay, thank you. All right, our, article four, I can tell you, has only been added in the last week or two. Um, the discussion came up that while we were changing the definition of height and frontage, that why not change the numbers that are on the table of area regulations? Um, there was originally a thought that the table of area regulations, which is, you know, I will tell you, we are, we're doing a lot of study on the idea of lot coverage, uh, house bulk, house size, and those will all be changes that would come to the table of area regulations, and the thought was to do them all at once. But it's probably easier and better to, to break it up. So the thought was to, on this go-around, while, while we're changing the two definitions, to also change the measurements. Uh, with respect to height, I'll just say quickly with height, that thirty-five feet survives. It, it's going to change in the harbor when we get to the harbor article, but thirty-five feet survives for a peak roof. Uh, thirty is suggested as the maximum height. Uh, thirty is suggested as the maximum height now for a flat roof. And we also did a lot of research into height maximums. Uh, thirty-five feet in some towns is not unheard of, thirty is common, thirty-two is common. Um, so, the, the suggestion is now to have a standard for a peak roof and a standard for a flat roof, uh, thirty-five and thirty. With respect to the frontage, um, this has been a long debated issue. Uh, we have uniform fifty-foot frontage in our residential districts, we are an outlier with respect to that. That is more common in cities than in suburban towns. We are proposing a switch from fifty to a hundred in RA, fifty to one-fifty in RB, and fifty to two-hundred in RC. Um, I just lost my.
I would say that the.
Well, I was, I was going to say that, that before the late sixties, before the changes in the bylaw that were made in, I believe sixty-seven or sixty-eight, we actually did have frontages of a hundred feet or better in the three districts. Uh, there was some philosophical change made at that time that caused the town to go to this. And coupled with our definition of lot width, we have a lot of pork chop and rat tail lots. Uh, obviously, if you increase frontage, you're going to increase the need to build subdivision roads. Um, my subdivision and some others were built in the late sixties, early seventies. I don't know if that development at that time was prompting this change, but the zoning working group is proposing that we change back to what we had pre-sixty-eight and go back to more typical suburban zoning for frontage. Um, we feel it's okay to make this change now. The other, the other changes to the table with respect to lot coverage and building size are not exactly tied to frontage, or, so, it's, it's more to, more to height necessarily so that we can make these changes now, coupled with the definitions.
So, um, Tom, I, I understand, you're, you're recommending that RA, um, frontage be fifty to a hundred feet instead of fifty-foot minimum? What if I want to make a RA, uh, frontage that's a hundred and two feet? I ca- I can't do that, right?
No, the, the, the frontages are the minimum that you need.
It, it, but it doesn't say minimum, it just says fifty to a hundred feet, absolutely.
Well, it says it in the table, I believe.
Okay, so you, alright, alright, okay. So, you're going to keep it as a, the, the minimum is fifty to a hundred feet, but intuitively it doesn't make sense.
If you, if you can picture the table in your mind, on the left side, it has minimums, and that's where frontage lot width, lot area and setbacks are.
If, if you want to sort of.
And then there's this, on the right, it's all maximums, that's where coverage is dealt.
If you wanted to increase the frontage and therefore limit potential pork chop, I don't know if there's any pork chops out there that are pending, but, um, do you want to increase the frontage? I bet Katie has the statistics on what the frontage is on every, in every district, on average, me- mean and max, min and max.
Yeah, Woody can, um, can, uh, dazzle you, but yes, we do.
I mean, is there, is there an average, or, you know, like a ninetieth percentile and tenth, tenth, tenth percentile for these, in terms of frontage? Well, I mean, do we want to marry the frontage requirement with what is typical?
Well, that's what we're doing, because you, you, you won't find fifty-foot frontages in typical suburban residential zoning. You might find it in a suburb town in their compact downtown slash village area, but you don't tend to see it at all out in the residential districts. Um, Katie, I, I don't know.
I would also say something about safety. As density increases, uh, that doesn't change necessarily the speed at which people travel. So, having a larger frontage to access a driveway, to me, is a safety enhancement. Because if you, if you, for just as an example, in RC, where, where we have bigger lots, somebody can come barreling along at fifty miles an hour and trying to stick a fifty-foot frontage uh, is, I think, quite a challenge, and I also think that it, it creates the potential for accidents to occur.
I haven't done the, the median, but you can just see as I click down here, like, everybody's like well over fifty.
Sure.
But, but these are what, what's in the zoning bylaws, I guess I was wondering what we have for, uh, average frontage for our lots.
Fifty, fifty across the board.
Uh, I.
You mean, you mean our actual lots?
The actual lot width.
Today, average. I don't know, I'm not sure we have all of that data.
What do you mean, in terms of frontage, in town?
In, in, for.
Yeah, for Resident A, what is the average frontage?
Yeah, what's the average? Yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
Um, it's not kept anywhere, it, it, you would literally have to pull it, um, parcel by parcel, unfortunately.
Okay.
And, and, I, I, again, again, we had these suburban dimensions once before when we formed the bylaw up and into the sixties, and I think whatever was going on in development here in the sixties, which did include cul-de-sacs and subdivisions being built, there was some philosophical belief that we should go away from requiring subdivisions with subdivision roads and go towards smaller lots and the potential of rat tails, common driveways, et cetera, et cetera.
Because it responds to the, the rocks and the wetlands and all that stuff, maybe that was the, the goal.
Now, one of the things I hope we will have before town meeting is, and Katie, I'm going to, you know, Katie, no, I'm going to put her on the spot, but that, that we take a certain chunk in town that has been developed in one way, and how would it have been developed if it went the subdivision cul-de-sac way? Would we have more lots or less lots? I don't think there's going to show a substantial difference in the couple of areas I'm thinking of. Ocean-ledged drive being one of them, some things that have been built off forested have. But, there was an obvious change in the thinking of the town in the sixties, and we're recommending going back to a more traditional suburban residential zone.
Okay, but I, I still don't understand, um, because all, all zoning districts require fifty feet of, uh, frontage.
A minimum, yeah.
Even the lot width, like, you know, you go back in and it can, it has to be wider. Um, but, but, but we, we say minimum required lots, why would we add the other number? Why, I, I don't understand what you're proposing here.
We're, we're proposing changing this fifty to a hundred, this fifty.
Oh, 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 okay, alright, alright.
Two hundred.
I understand, I was misreading it, I thought you were, you were saying that there, there would be a range of fifty to a hundred feet in Residence A.
No, 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 no.
Okay, well, you know, that's the way I read it.
Right.
No, I, I, I.
So, you're proposing to change the, the lot width.
Right. I'm, I'm looking at the chart right now, Clark, and, you know, the, the, the left side of the chart says minimum, so everybody will understand.
Yeah, so you would just replace fifty with a hundred in Residence A.
So, now, I'll, I'll just say that, again, this, this got added into the, uh, mix for the zoning working group just recently because of a thought that as long as we're changing the definitions, let's do the numbers, the measurements themselves. So, there may be more discussion amongst the zoning working group, whether it should be fifty to seventy-five feet and fifty to a hundred and twenty-five. You know, a number of numbers have been thrown around in various drafts, but right now, this is the working numbers that we're working with, so. Um, I don't know, and, you know, again, I, with the feedback, you know, if you have feedback on what the numbers should be, that's great. Or whether we should, um, deal with this now, or.
Well, I mean, if, if you're baby stepping, maybe you're baby stepping, maybe, maybe increase them by, you know, twenty-five percent instead of, um, or, or fifty percent instead of a hundred, make it seventy-five, I, I don't, it's just sort of random. I, I, I wish that we had some, some more analysis and we could, that we could, um, review and make sure that we're not, um.
So, why would you ask us more analysis?
Yeah, Clark, let me just remind you, everybody who's, everybody who's existing today with a house is grandfathered from this.
I understand.
This is, this, and I, and, you know, my own speculation is that where this is going to have the biggest impact is in Residence C, which is where some of the more least developed parts of town are.
Yep.
Uh, I don't think it's going to have a significant impact on Residence A, because Residence A is mostly built out and everybody will be grandfellowed. And substantial portion of Residence B is built out.
You can really see in this table that more urban places have the smaller frontages. And, um, more, uh, suburban or more almost farm-like, like Carlisle, have the larger frontages uh, across the board, so, um, uh, I think, I just think it's a safety issue.
I, well, I, I mean, I don't know if it's, it's a safety issue, because like wider, wider open spaces sometimes make, uh, people drive faster, right? But, I mean.
To me, it's a land use issue in terms of like what the ultimate build-out is going to look like for those remaining lots in town.
Yeah.
Well, it is, it is goofy, I mean, I don't know how many potential subdivisions there even are, I mean, of, of any size. But it is goofy to have fifty feet of frontage and require a hundred feet of width, it's, it's, I, I mean, I, I suppose like if you're, if you're talking about pieces of pie off of a, I mean, just talking about geometry-wise, pieces of pie off of a cul-de-sac, then, yeah, you could have fifty feet of frontage and you could have a hundred-foot width as you go back where you're building the house. Um, maybe they were thinking cul-de-sac, I, I, I don't know, I, I, uh, I don't really know what I think of this, but.
Clark, come up to my, why don't you come up to my house and see what it's like to have probably seventy-five feet for three houses in terms of total frontage. It, it's, it's a very, it's a very awkward and a very difficult kind of configuration for access.
Well, some neighborhoods can handle it and some probably can, I, I suppose it's sort of like a neighborhood thing. And, you know, I wish there was zoning that was neighborhood-based instead of.
Well, I mean, I just think that the data you know from other places that, that, that we're out of the line.
Been to your neighborhood, by the way.
I know.
And it doesn't seem that weird, it doesn't seem like that awkward and like, you know, that things are messed up, but
I'll, I'll make, I'll make.
Maybe I have to take another look.
Yeah, I'll, two things about what you just said, first of all, on lot width, I will tell you that that definition is being looked at quite a bit. It would come into the next package of changes to the table in the spring.
Yeah, well, again, it just doesn't make sense where you'd have fifty feet of frontage in.
The definition of lot width is to be used in such a way as to discourage rat tails, that's how that would be used.
I guess what I'm struggling with here is that I, I sort of feel like there's a, at least from Clark's comments, that there's an argument ma- made to do this all at once and, and change the whole table of regulations in one fell swoop, that, where I struggle with that, Clark, because I just see, between now and when we get that done, land use is going to keep on happening in town, and if people can keep on registering fifty-foot lots, I'm going to like lose more hair. I, I just, part of the reason why we chose to, to throw this out here as a, as a trial balloon is that, as Tom said, if we're going to change the definitions and we know we have these land use issues, why don't we just like deal with table of area regulations at the same time? You, you could punt it all to one massive.
I, I know, it just seemed, I guess I'd say, I understand, yeah, it drives you crazy, somebody else is making money, um, off of an antiquated, um, uh, number in a antiquated bylaw. Um, I, I just, um, I, I mean, if the goal is basically to, to put whatever controls we still have possible i- on A and Rs and subdivisions, um.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's a goal, I guess, we want to start ratcheting down people having the ability to, to create new houses. If that's the goal, I, I, I guess this would do something for that.
And, and, and again, like I said at the beginning, the other strategic thinking is just town meetings swallowing all of this in one, in one swallow.
Yeah, it might be a, a heavy lift.
Yeah, the big, the bigger and more substantial changes that are coming are on the right side of the table of the maximums.
I mean, I think if you make the argument that there's, that these are, that, that, there's a priority in it, that's why they really have to be here, and there's nothing that's like kind of would be nice to have.
Right.
But I see, I, I, I hear Katie's point, it's just, I think everybody's feeling the development pressure, but.
So, I think that's why what Katie says is important, and if we start masquerading this as some sort of, you know, uh, as, as, these are, you know, I, I think safety is having safer roads and, and, and safer, um, access is ancillary to the real point here, and it's to limit, uh, uh, overdevelopment of coacid. I, I, I think if you go into town meeting and start pitching, you know, uh, uh, that safety is of utmost importance, I think people may see through that and then not, and not take it to, as well as just coming out and saying, listen, we have a couple of measures here. You know, there's been a lot of development here, and we think that these are the, you know, a, a, two or three that we are, are, are find the most important, that will really, you know, will limit further, you know, rapid development of the town, and, and I think you're going to get a lot of support for something like that.
And that's super honest, you know.
Well, so, my, my comment is not to be, uh, evasive, uh, because I know exactly what this will do, so I, I, but I appreciate your comment, Eric, which is, it's always better to tell the story as clearly as possible, not make it complicated by other, uh, factors. So, can we?
And, and by the way, I, I agree with that, Eric, because that is the objective here, is, you know, the the, the feedback we're getting when the master plan was put together, the feedback we get on some of these individual projects is, is basically that some people believe the town is being overdeveloped. Um, and we need to put some better controls, we don't have the tools in our hands to do everything. Um, and just the complicated nature of it and overhauling an entire bylaw to address that problem um, needs to be done in steps like this, but yeah, I, I wouldn't hide anything from.
Here's a simple thing you can do to, to ratchet back development, boom. Now, what the actual impact is, I don't know, hard to say, unless you're going to get a subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, when, when, when they made the big changes in eighty-six and in sixty-eight, did they probably think through everything that might have happened? No, but now, you know, it's been thirty years since we've looked at that table comprehensively. And, and part of the selling point of the town is it's simply time, just logically, that it's time to look at things, because in thirty years, development patterns have changed quite a bit. And we have the data to back that up and showing how much this town has grown since the year two thousand. I mean, it's, it's astounding the growth in the last twenty years. So, alright, if we can, just to keep us moving, uh, so, Article Five, this is one that's very much a work in progress, this is ledge protection. It is grafting another amendment to the earth removal bylaw we did in the spring with adding clearing regulations, this would add ledge protection. Uh, there's nothing to borrow from, from another community, this is a fairly unique coacid issue, because we have all this exposed ledge that makes up our aesthetic beauty, blah, blah, blah. So, the language is a work in progress, and any comments and feedback would be welcome, but the bottom line of this, we are not regulating ledge that's under the ground, we are not regulating blasting that many of the butters to forty, to, to the windy hill projects wanted us to do. We are not changing the current bylaw that says you can remove what is necessary to build the house, the primary structure, but what we are saying is that for the rest of the lot, for the primary structure and its utilities, by the way, um, you know, including sewage disposal, for the rest of the lot, exposed ledge face should be untouched, and if it's not going to be untouched, then the planning board is going to have to issue a special permit.
I, I like that, I like that goal. I'm just not sure that the language, uh, pulls it off yet.
Correct, and that's what we're working on, but it's, it's, it's.
I like the goal.
The, yeah, leaving the current bylaw the way it is with respect to the construction of the house, its sewer your septic system and its utility lines. Everything else on the lot, pools, tennis courts, sheds, driveways, is going to require a special permit. It likely is also going to go with Concom to stormwater, but we'll get a say in how much visible ledge is removed or not removed under a permitting process. we'll get a say in how much visible ledge is removed or not removed under a permitting process.
What, when I put my designer hat on, I, I kind of, I, I've said this before, I think that if we want people to do something like preserve ledge, we should establish it as a goal and build in some flexibility to allow that, uh, to happen more readily.
That's why.
An incentive.
Yeah, that's why the special permit, rather than make a hard line where they would have had to get a variance.
So can we provide setback waivers? Like other setback waivers to allow ledge to be preserved more readily? That might be an idea. I, I just, I'm, I'm just, um, trying to focus on, um, I, I think it's a great goal. I just, how, what's the mechanics to, to make?
Clark, can you, can you use your idea and talk about it in terms of Windy Hill?
Well. Uh.
You've got a knob of granite in the front, not far from the street. You've got a knob on the, uh, um, west, southwest, uh, upper lot?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I mean, no, I, I, I don't, I, I don't know how I can make that fit like right now off the cuff, but I'll think about it and we could talk about it. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I, here we just, so if we came, if we came across a lot where the only possible place somebody could put in a driveway is over a nice piece, is over a nice piece. And by the way, the last lot available on Ocean ledge, since I had a client look at it, has that exact problem.
Right.
It's got a giant, it's got a giant cliff that is across the fifty-foot frontage and you can't get into it without blasting through it. And it's a giant price tag to do that.
Sounds like a loser-y access to me.
But well.
Yes.
But that's an example, that's an example. So this is set up that that would have to be dealt with in a special permit process. And does the special permit process give us the flexibility? I think it does. You know, whether, the use of the word waiver gets confusing because waiver is not really a legal standard, um, under the zoning act, but.
Okay, can we, can you work on the language maybe? And I'll, I'll ask you about how that, how the carrot might work?
Yeah, this one is something we need, you know, as much feedback as we can. And I don't think anybody here is prejudiced from contributing a suggestion by the fact that we have to do the.
I mean, it's, it's a great goal. It's a, it's a worthy, uh, thing. I'd just love to make it really work.
All right, um, the next one is about rezoning the harbor. And this, and this one too is an imperative with the, you know, we have the harbor project, the, the hotel project coming. We have changes in ownership. We have probably soon following those changes in ownership, an impetus for redevelopment. And there's a number of objectives being addressed here, a number of things that we're trying to address. Number one is the waterfront properties going around from the yacht club all the way to the end of Parker Ave is just a, I use the word polyglot. I think Katie uses checkerboard. There's all kinds of zoning districts. There is still waterfront business. There is downtown or village business on the land side of Elm Street. There is residential. There's light industrial at the end of Parker Avenue. So, the first part of the proposal is that everything on the waterfront side from the yacht club around to Parker Avenue, except for, uh, the Oaks Estate, which would stay Residence C. And of course, the houses on Parker Avenue, which stay whatever they are. Everything along the harbor and then on the commercial land side of Elm Street and the Legion, I believe Katie, the Legions included.
Yeah, it's all right.
Would become waterfront business. That's the first step. Second step is with respect to the uses, the table of uses is another one of those projects that we're working on. That's probably a spring thing. Because we have all kinds of uses. We, you know, we just brought back the use variants, thank God, to give us some flexibility again. But there's antiquated uses that don't apply anymore. We're gonna go through that table with a fine-tooth comb. But for the existing waterfront business uses, what happened at the hotel could not happen. That was an overlay district. That overlay district would be sunsetted because it's no longer needed. But what we are proposing for uses in the short term is to extend the possibility for mixed use to the rest of the waterfront business district. That would mean primarily in terms of, you know, more immediate impact, the restaurant site, the mill.
Yeah.
Boatyard site.
Gosh, I don't know. I think we're gonna want to see, um, the, the harbor project that we did an overlay district for. Had you thought about the overlay district? I mean, I don't know all your background and thinking. I'm just gonna shoot out what I think quickly.
Yeah.
What, fir- first, have you looked at a, maybe a overlay district? And, uh, I'd like to see what it looks like on a, on a zo- updated, like a zoning map, uh, mock-up. Like, it might be more intuitive if you see it rather than look at this table. And then the third thing is you don't spell yacht, yacht club that way. It's, it's Y-A-C-H-T, not T-C-H.
Okay.
Sorry. Those are my three comments.
No, all right. So he, he, here's, here's the thing is that the, the overlay, I think.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
We had, we had some issues with it and we didn't have some issues with it. The impetus for financial benefit and to the harbor properties is going to be towards mixed use. I am concerned that the change we make be town-driven rather than developer-driven as the overlay district in my mind was, my perception of it.
Yeah.
I know, I know there was a town board behind it too. I, I get that. But I think the reality for investment and development that isn't left to fall apart and go to pot is going to be to allow mixed use. I, the group is thinking, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say I, I shouldn't say I. The group is thinking this.
I mean, in the, in the village and the harbor projects that we've seen, not to be everyone wants to do any commercial space. They just want to do the residential stuff. More dollars per square foot and less uncertainty in terms of what they can, who they can lease to, market saturation and all that crap.
I, I understand that. And one of the things that made me pause today, I was thinking about it today, that in carrying over the definition of mixed use from the existing uh, overlay district by law, we don't, we, we, I need to address the percentage of commercial space.
Absolutely. And, and in the village, we always thought it was gonna be first floor commercial, second and third floor apartments. That would be roughly thirty percent, uh, of a commercial entity, whether it's office or, or retail or whatever. You know, I mean, they're saying, hey, it's six months retail. We won't be able to make a million. We won't be able to get anybody to lease our spaces. Forget about it. We'll put in, uh, exhibition space in a hundred, hundred square feet. That, that's, that's all very well and good, but.
I, I, I think we have to mandate commercial only on the first floor as we do in the village. Um, I think that was one of the shortcomings of the harbor overlay district, so we want to change that.
Well, I mean, we tried to lock in a minimum percentage and it got, um, skirted around. I don't know.
Well, it was.
It got manipulated.
Yeah, it was awkwardly written. It was awkwardly written because of the combination of outside and inside and.
It didn't work. It didn't work the way we thought it was gonna be. It was like, oh, crap. Oh, crap. Yeah, I guess they can do it that way.
Right. Now, the other big change here in response to our experience with the harbor overlay is to limit the height in the harbor to, since we know it has to include base flood elevation. Is to limit the height in the harbor to, what does it say here? I forget where we, where we ended up.
Including base elevation.
Well, it, it says TBD. We haven't settled on a number, but the, the harbor overlay district did not address the height issue and it left it thirty-five feet.
We tried to, we said the flood elevation is the base.
I understand that, but we didn't change thirty-five feet. And as a result, we have a building that is going to be substantially higher than thirty-five feet. Because we had, we had to add whatever it was, elevation eight or elevation ten is the flood elevation there.
Well, if you lower it, then you're, then you're stuck with two stories and then you'd be fifty percent.
Correct. And that, that, that is the thinking of the group that to preserve the viewscapes for the rest of the population, that we are going to have a height that basically is gonna limit the building to two stories, two and a half stories. So we are, you see that it says TBD because we haven't settled on the number, but the, the number twenty-five feet above base elevation has been bandied about, twenty-eight has come up, nothing higher than that.
You know.
And so that the future development, yes, they'll be able to get some residential use that makes money. But limited in height, so we don't have a repeat of what we're.
Well, I'm not sure that height is the only issue. You know, you might, may, um, have to have fifty percent open space and in between, not like all jammed up against the water's edge as a concept, but I think this is a heavy lift. I, I don't see this going to Fall Town Meeting. But I, I like talking about it. I think it's a great first step. But I don't see this going to Fall Town Meeting. I just think.
It's no different.
Plutonium.
Well, it's not different than going to Spring Town Meeting and the fact.
No, I think it's plutonium. I just, I think we gotta think about it really carefully.
Clark, why do you think it's plutonium?
Well, it's a, a line from the shooter.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but, but I, what the point is, Tom.
I think we changed, we did an overlay at the Cove. And the, that project has yet to come to fruition. I think a lot of people are like, well, we gave you a shot. We thought you were gonna, initially, they were gonna rezone the whole harbor, which we, you know, might have condos as of right, but with a, a special permit process uh, everywhere. And I think people were really worried about that, really concerned. And I think the outline of this sort of looks like that again, very quickly, before we've even seen the Cove, um, uh, uh, project, uh, completed.
Well, here, here's my thought about that. I think, I think I still to this day, you know, one of the limitations, well, that being by Zoom is I think that people are going to be surprised when the harbor project, the hotel project is built at the height. And that's fine.
Add that up during the hearings. You, you may be, you may be right. They might be, uh, delighted by other things. Hard to say, but
and, and, and.
You need a full-scale model in order to.
I understand.
And, and we asked for one and we didn't get one, right?
No, we're gonna get a full-scale model.
One.
Full-scale model. Everybody likes it.
As, as we're talking about this and as I've thought about it and I'm looking at it, you know, we have TBDs, this is still a work in progress.
Yeah.
But, and, and one of the intents here is to take out whatever negatives we, we think we've experienced with the overlay district and fix them. But to also, like I said before, recognize the economic reality of development in twenty twenty-one is that mixed use is going to be the impetus for these new owners. And what I'm concerned about, about waiting is that we do have new ownership. They're not gonna sit on it forever. They're going to propose it, you know, and I, 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 I don't want to see a situation where we are faced only with a proposal from developers to extend the existing overlay district to the other properties in the harbor. That's not what we want. We want, we want to dictate, if, if, if mixed use is the inevitable best use of the property. And you, you, you first have to accept that idea and I, I'm okay with accepting.
Maybe, maybe not. In some locations, possibly. I mean, I, I guess it's all in the details and the, the exact spot. The stuff on the southern end of the harbor, yeah, yeah, maybe. The stuff on the other side of the harbor, like the yacht club, I don't think so. I don't see that becoming like a robust commercial, uh, commercial.
I don't, I, yeah, I don't, I don't see it. I mean, changing the waterfront business district yacht club to that is to more get it out of a grandfathering status and have it more as an as of right use. And, and when we go through the full table of uses, we, that's one thing we may correct. I don't see the yacht club getting redeveloped.
Right. But I don't see that, that, I mean, I, I don't see that area necessarily, uh, having zoning changes, uh, being a priority for the community.
Well.
Anyway, uh, it's a heavy lift. I, I don't see it happening for Fall Town Meeting, but.
Well, I, it's, it's not gonna be any less a heavy lift in the spring. And my point is, is that there are dynamics going on in the harbor that require us to act rather than react.
Well, even extending the overlay district would be a vote of town meeting, so.
Yeah, I know. I know that. I know that. But, and, but I think the town, our group, that the suggestion of the zoning working group is that we go to the town with a proposal, not react and simply.
Okay, I, I buy that. I just think it's gonna take more time. This is complicated.
Yeah.
I wouldn't rush it. I, I wouldn't rush it, Tom.
I'm not, not trying, suggesting rushing it, but I'm, you know, we're here at this.
You want to do it now, which means it's being rushed. I, I just, I just think it's too heavy a lift.
We're gonna be behind the eight ball if we wait till the spring.
No, you're gonna, you still, if you're still doing the work, it's gonna be useful. You're gonna be ready, um, uh, when the time comes.
All right.
Good. But you agree with, you agree with the preface of the town proactively?
Trying to plan out, yes, uh, what could be done there. Yes, absolutely. I, I think, um, because then we can get our stuff in there like we did for the overlay district. You know, we could get the view quarters or we could get like percentage of lot width that can be developed and then open space on either side. As opposed to like a front yard that's a parking lot and like a big wall. We could get things like that in there. If we think about it and imagine what, what might make sense. I, I, I think mixed use is great. It's just we've had trouble with it in the past.
Good. Right. All right.
So, uh, that brings us to the end of the items. And, but I'd like to, I'd like to get a feel from uh, Eric. Eric, how do you feel about this, uh, recent conversation about the harbor?
I mean, I, I think that i- in theory, it's, it's, it sounds like a great idea, but I think it probably is something that gets pushed out to spring.
But, but I mean, from a sentiment perspective, in, in your experience in your own neighborhood, are you hearing people uh, mulling over the, the harbor project and, and just mulling the harbor area over in general?
No, actually I'm not. I don't, and I, I don't know that I, we will until, you know, like you said, like Tom said, once you start to see it go up and start to see it actually live, right? That's when I think it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna become a reality and, and, and that's when people are gonna start talking a lot.
Is anybody talking about the lobster pound and the Atlantica under common ownership now and what's headed that way?
I hear, I hear concerns about the idea of having aquaculture in the harbor. And though, and, uh, there really.
It's not allowed. There's no open fish, uh, shellfish beds inside the harbor.
Are you, are you, are you hearing a sentiment to have it or not?
I'm hearing a sentiment to have it. And I also know that the water quality wouldn't allow it.
Yeah, shellfish beds that are open outside the breakwater in Situate.
Well, but you know, Clark, that there was this, an attempt to put, uh, oyster beds in, in the harbor. Right? You're aware of that movement and the money that was raised to fight it.
The state regulations don't allow. It was outside the breakwater in Situate. And the, um, Cohasset people didn't like it, the way it was set up. And Situate kinda was like, it's our jurisdictional water. But I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor that.
I don't, I, I don't think there was anything proposed inside the harbor and the, and, and Mother Nature would, would prevent anything inside the harbor right now, so.
I'm just telling you what I heard. I'm not advocating one way or the other.
Okay, can we, uh?
So basically, we basic, no, we still have a little bit more business to deal with.
All right. Well, anyway, I, I want to thank everybody for their attention to this.
A lot of work, a lot of work.
Yeah.
Eric, I want to apologize again. Nothing ill was intended, believe me.
Okay, um, great. I'm glad to hear that. Um, okay, so I'm gonna postpone member comments and, uh, committee liaison updates because it's late, but there are some things that Lauren needs to tell us about what's going on. And I would like Lauren to have a comment if she can about the, uh, legal representation that we have, but you may not have much to say about it. But I think we ought to ask the selectmen to allow the people who are gonna represent us to actually come and talk to us. That's my view. But let's do. to actually come and talk to us. That's my view. But let's do the planning staff updates, fee schedules and policy update.
Sure, and in my uh origin of New York sense, I'll keep it very short. Um upcoming updates in addition to the Common Drive stuff we spoke about earlier that you can look forward to in September and October is update to our fee schedule. We're looking to do that for all permitting planning functions, um filing and application procedures and rules and regulations. We're looking to sort of do some tightening up, cleanup and and modification of those to bring them up to sort of today's best practices and standards. Um the legal update, uh the legal RFP was settled and it was a sign that we'll be using KP law for our land use purposes. I have yet to um get in touch with the specific council that we will be assigned to, though that's happening next week. And at this point, I believe in the throughout the rest of August, they're sort of finishing up the contracting and paperwork, and we plan to sort of bring them up to speed in September. With that said, we do have two open applications that we've been working with Murphy, Hasty, Toomey and Lehane with. We'll conclude our our work with them on those projects and then we'll transition over to our new council. Um on just terms of updates, uh the town has hired um a new permanent conservation agent. Her name is Charlotte. I don't yet have a last name, but she's starting uh in two weeks and um that's very exciting news. And then um just some other updates quickly. I am working with the town clerk and the assessor to sort of uh tighten up the streets list, and I'll be bringing that back to you following our last discussion at last meeting. Just upcoming dates for your calendar. Um next week on Tuesday, we have a citizen planning training collaborative session from five to seven P M, and the topic of that is uh planning board and zoning board ru- uh rules and respons- roles and responsibilities. Um so please, if you're available, we'd love your attendance at that. Um we have our next two planning board meetings coming up in September, on September eighth and twenty second. We do not have a second planning board meeting in August. And then uh my final two things for you are, uh the Elm Street Corridor, our second public input survey was launched this week. I sent it out to um a many, many recipients. I sent mailings out. I'm actually gonna be walking around Elm Street, stapling signs to polls. I got temporary permission to do that. Um but if you all could, when you have a moment, if you could input in the survey and ask everyone that you know who's interested and a user of Elm Street to do the same, the more input we can have, the better. And then finally, I will ask uh if you are comfortable, if if I could have a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from June twenty third, that I believe Jen.
Uh uh.
Okay.
Uh. All those in favor, Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
And that's all I have for you. I think that was under four minutes.
Can I ask you one thing about this? How modern are our fee schedules going to be? Are we going to be uh still trailing what is considered conventional? Are we actually leapfrogging and getting ourselves where we should be?
We're looking to base it off of neighboring communities so that we have sort of a a level of what other communities are doing. Um so we'll have more information.
Norwell.
Yes, exactly. So we want to be sort of on on a level playing field with our peers, so we're looking to get some data on that, and we'll be circling back to you soon with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh are there any items not anticipated forty eight hours in advance that anyone would like to raise?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I get a second? Uh, all right, uh Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye. Thanks, everybody. Good meeting.
Thank you. Good night.
To you.